The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in.
15th, 2011, and call it to order. First up, invocation by Pastor David Butler, who's soon becoming our chaplain here.
Amen. Father God, we seek your help this evening. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us as we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity so that we can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda, reveal problem areas, and show us the best solutions that will apply. Point our ears to ever positive outcomes since our last meeting, and let these favorable results and developments encourage every heart in this room. Dear God, you tell us to cleanse our hearts, and yet you called upon Mel Ponder and others to cleanse the beach, and we thank you for their endeavors, Lord. Give them volunteers and helpers. Help us apply your wisdom as we decide on certain matters and make plans, and we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right, before we get started, we need an agenda approval. Is there anything that any council members would like to change, Dr. Ramswell?
I have an item under my name, the beach cleaning, I believe it is, and I'd like to move that up if possible, maybe up here at the very beginning, right after we do the approval of the minutes and such. If that's...
And I'll second that.
We got a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Ms. Abar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Your vote is unanimous, so that'll be the change. Anyone else to my left? I see no one over there. Ms. Abar?
Yes, Mayor. If I may be so inclined to add under my name, two things to find out about getting a planning officer under Mr. Lewis to take over the day-in-and-day-out position of approving permits.
That's under your name?
Yes.
Under 7E?
7E, yes, sir. And the second thing would be to, I guess I could commend the Parks Department for removal of all the bamboo reeds there on Main Street.
Yeah, okay. All right. You get a motion and make that adjustment?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, I'm gonna start the other way. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Abar?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
And Mr. Braden?
Yes.
All right, we got our agenda set up.
We got one other thing, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Got a, had a, like to add under my name, a speed issue in town on the connector streets between Cybert and Calhoun.
All right.
Motion to add.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? And we'll take a vote. Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Ms. Abar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, so have it so moved. All right. Kevin? All right, no more additions. Hallelujah. I'm hoping we get out of here by 10:00. That's my goal tonight. So remember that, folks, because this is a very jam-packed meeting tonight, as you all know, because if you reviewed your briefing document, I'm sure you spent more than just a few hours. All right, we got approval of the minutes. I'll take entertaining motion under item 1A.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Seeing any comments? Seeing none? Mr. Schmidt's got his mouth full, so I'll start at the other end. Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Ms. Abar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
I'm glad I looked down there before I started. All right. First up, we don't have any proclamations or recognitions, but we do have a special presentation. Oakley County Beach Cleaning Services, Oakley County. And Mr. Ponder, are you gonna be the present, presenter? Come on up, sir. Honored to have you here in our midst. Former mayor of Destin, by the way.
Appreciate that. Mayor, City Council, it's an honor to be before y'all today. Feels good coming back in these chambers. Thank you for your great leadership in our city. You're doing great things. And I don't know what you're eating, Councilman Schmidt, but it looks like it's tasty. And I appreciate the good, our good pastor, the chaplain now, as he's been called, to get the blessing coming in, so I, so far, so good. But just want to give a quick update. You know, this, I sat and thinking about tonight, and, you know, clearly there's some situations we even saw this weekend on the beach. It's just totally unacceptable. You know, you can't have a situation like that and not be displeased with the service when you look at that. But also think and look back that there is, thank you Pastor Dave for starting it, there is a scripture that says, "One may be overpowered, but two can withstand, and a three-stranded cord is not easily broken." And what I mean by that is if you look back in the relationship, you know, the relationship, to me, there's always a power in partnership. Doesn't mean it's perfect. A lot of times it's not. But there's also a reliability and a dependency that if there is an issue, that you pick up the call, a phone, and call somebody with a relationship and say, "Hey, I've got a problem with A, B, or C," and because of a relationship, because you're work, used to working with each other, you then solve the problem. You don't do it adversarially. You do it because of, there's a power when you're unified and you find that partnership. But I'll be the first to say, as I opened up, as I saw the emails, I'm as unhappy as y'all with what you saw. Mr. Coffey is here from the county. Internally, we're not happy with, but we learn from that and hopefully make it better. But, you know, we actually, Mayor, Mr. Hofstadter, who's now our county administrator, came before this council six years ago and presented some plans that he wanted to work with in terms of beach cleanup and raking, and he put forth some aspirations at the time. Probably not a grand slam, maybe across the board to everyone, but I think it's worked reasonably well. I'm sure there's been issues that maybe when I was gone or whatever, some things that came up that need to be improved, and I hope they were. If they weren't, then hopefully we'll, we'll solve those now. But what's before you that Ms. Lisa just put out in front of everyone is a new, I think it was emailed to y'all this afternoon, is maybe a new schedule of sorts that's maybe a little more reliable, maybe more dependable, but also I'm hoping that through, I'm hoping, maybe because the role that I play as a liaison between you and the county, the role of Craig and others that are here, that we put some systems in place so that, heaven forbid, we see that situation, that we have a phone system or a team system concept that we can solve that problem so it doesn't happen again. But basically, you know, obviously we all know, I mean, Mr. Destin, you and your family know very well, tourism and fishing, it's expanded tremendously over the last 10 years. You can look at the numbers in your packet. With increased tourism can increase garbage trash collection. Some astronomical numbers, doesn't give us an excuse not to do a good job, but it has put, you know, stress on staff and reliability and schedules and things of that nature. But we found ourselves today of trying to find something that we could put before you that, A, you're pleased with, B, that you see the relationship strength behind that so that if there's something that needs to be improved, that we continuously improve that relationship so that whether it's pre-summer, post-summer, or whatever, we say, "Hey, old Ponder, you know, listen, that was good, but it wasn't what we expected, so how do we improve that situation?" And so I'm hoping that as you can glance through that, it's got trash pickup daily. Obviously, it doesn't happen Sunday. It's supposed to be daily, starting March 1st. That will continue. Raking, what we're proposing and that I like is, so it's, because I think if there's no standard, if there's no consistency, then there's no reliability on your perspective or your staff's perspective. So I like the proposal of taking the beach and breaking it in thirds and sections, and on, say, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they do a certain section so that the vendors know if they're in that section, hey, maybe wait before you set up till 7:30 because that, that area's gonna be raked that day. And then they do the other two sections, the other Wednesday and Friday. So there's dependability that you know certain sections of the beach will be raked once a week, which is comparable to every other county in Northwest Florida, is comparable to Naples, I mean Henderson Beach and other parts that, that they, some of them don't even do any raking. But at the bottom line, is the beach clean? Is it reliably clean? And is all the trash picked up? And if the trash is not picked up, do you have the working relationship to call myself, Craig, whomever, the mayor, Lance, Webb, and say, "Hey, we got a problem. We have a team that's can readily come and pick that trash up so that you have an expectancy that's not going to stay there and not be picked up." But I think from a scheduling standpoint, I mean, I'm obviously, Pastor hit it, and Mr. Perry's hit it, I know, the beaches being cleaned is, is, when they're coming to Destin, you don't want to, that front porch hospitality, you want to be greeted with something that's not consistently a good sight for them. And so I think from our perspective, as you look through it, I think, you know, we're developing a proposed schedule, but can adjust as necessary, work on the continued partnership we have between the city and the county, working through issues, having a standardized set of responsibilities that you can rely upon that. And then if it's not the way that collectively we think it should be handled, then we work together to improve the situation. I think the county has done a yeoman effort to be a good partner, whether it's lifeguards or it's beach, I know Councilman Destin here worked on beachfront partial acquisition, but y'all did all that. Beach maintenance, law enforcement, beach trash removal, cleaning, you know, we also became a partner with you in terms of helping your parks remain clean. There's, there's a fiscal partnership there as well. And I want to keep all that. I mean, I live here, it's where I lit, raised my family, and so I want to make sure we maintain all that. So, Mr. Mayor, I want to just, that is the kind of, the proposal before you. I think it's kind of simple, it's kind of standard, and so I, but I'm happy to take questions, comments, concerns. Yes, sir, Mayor?
You and I both talked about just the challenges, like we saw the full trash cans. And, you know, to me, I'm a simple guy, so I try to find simple solutions.
Sure.
It's real apparent that those overfilling trash cans is one of the most visual aspects to have in a dirty beach. And emptying them, I would think, at 11 o'clock and 7 o'clock makes more sense. But I also understand what that means to public works, to empty something at 7:00 at night. So what I'd like to know is, like, when we get inundated during the, you know, 4th of July weekend, is it okay if, if we can provide some overtime, you know, for our public work guys? And maybe that be an option where we could, we could, you know, bill the county and just say, you know, "Your schedule's working fine, but this is an abnormal week."
Right.
Or a couple of weeks, where we'd have that flexibility for our public works crew to go out there, and we could come up with a viable economic solution to that.
And it's a great point, Mayor. I'm glad you brought it up, is when we look at the heavier weekends, July 4th, Memorial Day, Labor Day, any other week, maybe our weekend that seems to be abnormally high in terms of our guests in town, we'll do a second cleanup. We'll do a second pickup. So it'll save you the concern or effort there. And so we do it seven days a week, but on the heavier weekends or what we know to be the heavier visits here, we'll do the second sweep-through. We could absolutely look as part of the submitted process, what that partnership would look like. Heaven forbid we get into a situation we're not expecting, but that's something I could always bring back to staff and the commissioners and see what they think about giving y'all a green light for that. I couldn't speak for them here tonight. Other than what I can speak on is, we've already had the discussion, is on the heavier visited weeks or weekends, we'll do the second sweep of trash so that we can make sure it's hopefully as clean as it can be.
Well, this is, this is Dr. Ramswell's baby. It's one of her key issues.
Sure.
In fact, she wanted to move it up on the agenda, so let's just go ahead and start that portion of moving it up while we got our commissioner representing us here, if you'd like.
Can I say something before she?
Sure.
I just, just because this was on Facebook at 9:00 yesterday morning, and that's how I saw it, and that's when I forwarded it to Lance and the team and Joey and said, "I don't know how we can do something, but we need to do something now. We need to authorize overtime." And Joey and his folks and Lisa and their folks, I mean, they stepped it up, but by the time they got it going, you know, that, it was 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, and I'm just, I'm very happy to hear that you're gonna be very proactive on this cleanup. And I commend Dr. Preble for getting this thing rolling. But I was just sad that our first weekend of spring breakers, for hours, that's the trash pile they got to look at. So I'm glad we're, we're getting it fixed. But the overtime question he asked this past weekend, I mean, that would be something I would like to know, if, you know, all those folks that just came out on a Sunday that aren't supposed to work, they cleaned everything up, if we can find a way to take care of them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dr. Ramswell. You got the floor.
Thanks. Thank you so much for coming, and Craig, you as well. Well, I guess sort of the first thing is, I don't think we can task our staff to do overtime or anything. That would be responsibility of the city manager, but I did want to let you in, and I believe you were at the meeting. I know there was one meeting, maybe you weren't, but it was a Zoom meeting. But one of the things that we had discussed in the beach advising meeting was having vendors help out, especially during spring break and some of the crowded holidays and such. And so one of the thoughts was, and they were willing to do it, especially some of those that have literally a mile or more of beach, that they are responsible for all the different setups in that stretch. They said they would be more than willing to make a run and pick some things up to, you know, pull that off. And in fact, Ms. Kopp pulled together an ordinance that I think we're gonna see at some point here soon, that would actually enable them to use their ATVs to, so they're not, you know, picking up at one location and then walking back and then going for, so just to sort of facilitate everything. So, you know, we've had some good open conversations about how we can all work together to make the beaches look better and to, you know, really ensure that they look beautiful the way we want them to and the way our tourists and our residents expect. So I did want to just share that piece, that we have been talking about different possibilities in terms of trash. And the vendors in particular, because I know we've had some issues where the vendors will pick up, or set up, I should say, and then suddenly someone would show up and do some work, well, they've already set up and it was problematic. But we talked through a lot of those issues too, and the vendors said absolutely that part of the issue has been, they've not been able to ensure when someone was gonna come through and rake the beach or sweep the beach. So rather than just sit and wait and wait and no one comes, they just started setting up. And they are more than willing as well, and they expressed this in the meeting, that they would wait, you know, till 7:00, and, you know, as long as we're seeing a pattern, they're seeing a pattern of the beach being regularly swept on a regular schedule, you know, maybe they know it's Tuesdays of the day they're not gonna come through, or Thursday's the day they're not gonna come through. And they know they can go ahead and set up earlier that day and not wait. But I think the key, everybody wants to work together, but we've got to establish a schedule that everyone can rely on, so we're not, you know, crossing paths or, you know, getting short with one another.
Mayor? Council, I fully agree. And I, and when there's no dependability on a schedule, then people make up their own rules. And the problem, and if you can't consistently count on that, then people take things in their own hands. And then there's several problems with that, for me at least, is we're all fiscal, I mean, we're all, we all have a fiduciary responsibility over our area, whether you work on the beach or not, because it's played such a vital role to our community. And so, but if the people that are out there, if you say you're coming on Tuesday and you never show up, they're like, "Uh, what happened?" But if we, I like, that's why I like this new scheduling, so that if you're out there, you know if you're in section A, B, or C, whether it's Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, your beach is gonna be raked that day before 7:30. So if you're a vendor or an, whatever, or the condo, whatever the case may be, and then that way, the other six days of the week, you can do whatever you're legally allowed to do. And so, but I agree, without question, you gotta have some consistency and some reliability. Without that, then I think that we're, we're gonna be, y'all will be frustrated with us, we'll be frustrated with the system. But I think collectively, it just gives you, also gives you something to push back. If we don't honor that, then, then that's, that's our fault.
It's great to hear you say that, and I know we've really been trying to work together, and it sounded like we were in a really good place, and I'm not sure what happened last week, but clearly we want to work together. And I know Mr. Warren has been instrumental in facilitating those conversations, and just the goal is ultimately, we want our beautiful beach, and I'm sure the TDC does too, knowing the tourist dollars that it's bringing in, and it helps and supports really almost everything around here. So, you know, we all have the same goals, it's just a matter of getting everybody on a schedule, everybody knowing what's going on so that it's reliable, and then like you said, if it's not working out, if it's, if it's too much of a burden or, you know, a mis, whatever, you know, so we can make alternate arrangements so that it's not a burden and, you know, people can better funnel their money or their time or whatever.
Commissioner Ponder, one of the things that Mr. Warren and Craig and I have spoke about is, we are in the, season's starting this weekend, and this plan is, is a reasonable plan, and I hope we can execute it. But I hope we can make a commitment to have a review of how we've done, all of us, at the tail end of the year, October, November-ish, and then during that, the long months of winter, we'll come up to tweak it and improve it and strengthen it. So as long as our, as our representative here at Destin, if you'll help me make that commitment between our two staffs, and then put our council in a position to share their, their critique of how the season went, I think that will help keep the, the levels of communication open, and we'll keep that partnership healthy and intact. Because we really do need each other. We're so codependent, the county and this city, so that's, that's, we want to go down the same path you do, I believe.
May I respond? Captain Mayor, I just want to say, just, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Councilman, I just want to thank you. Mr. Angela, I appreciate you've always been a passionate leader in this regard. And if, all of y'all should have my cell number on this commission, if not, I'll give it to you. You text me, you know, here's the, here's the kind of, this is a perfect, I mean, when you see a trash pile like that, I don't want you to see it and say, "County failed again." I want it to be, I want, the path to the victory is, I know Ponder, I'll text him right away. I got Craig, I got Lance. This, I want the family feel so that we're all, it's not your responsibility, it's ours to keep it clean, but I'd be, I'd be probably lying if I didn't say we're gonna bat a thousand every time. We, that's our goal, obviously, but if we slip, I want you to call and say, "Ponder, hey, listen, I saw this out there, I know, but hey, let's all team up and get it done." And I think that's, and yes, I'd love a review. The only way we can improve is, is to continuously review, review the plan and make it better. And I tell you, Lance and Webb, God bless them, they've been extremely patient with me and taking my calls and work with me, and I know they, they work with each of you as well. And so each of you, I think, or some of you have provided some input, and so, and it's all filtering through. And then Craig from our staff, so, but yes, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Thank you for being here, and I agree with everything you're saying, and the relationship is very important. And I know that Webb and the team and staff members on y'all's staff as well has been working very hard on this. Just a couple of technical things, I was hoping you or Mr. Hofstadter could maybe explain to me. There's a part on here that says, "Check for trash two days per week." Is that in conflict with seven days a week of trash collection?
That's probably, is that Noriega? A different time of year? There's a couple of different times.
Well, it says March through October 31st.
Okay.
Is that Noriega?
Come on up.
That's probably Noriega point.
That has to do with, my name's Craig Coffey, I'm deputy county administrator, by the way. So that has to do with, we've guaranteed the three days a week, and in between those three days, we might do additional sweepings, but we won the three guarantees, and we're definitely gonna be picking up trash on a four-wheeler, if nothing else, up and down the beach, not just the trash cans. We want to police the beach up even if we're not sweeping.
So trash pickup is seven days per week?
That is correct.
That's more talking about machine trash?
Yes, sir. That's more just checking the area, if we aren't sweeping that day, we're either, we do additional sweeping or we'll do other.
Thank you. No, it's okay, I just, just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
I have another technical question.
And I know that this has been an ongoing point of where we're at today, and, and this is very exciting that we're having this presented. So from my understanding though, I mean, two weeks ago, some of these scheduling things, these have been in place, I believe, for the past five, six years or something. So is there something internally that's changing to make this actually be followed starting tomorrow, I'm assuming, or today and moving forward?
Well, I will, I'd be remiss if I didn't say we had staff issues and issues related to COVID at once upon a time, and, and I will also be remiss if I didn't say, I don't think we, I think we got complacent in the way we handled things, and so it went from the meeting I had with Dr. Ramswell to, I mean, that got my attention, and I started piquing up because this is something I need management focus on. And this weekend, my hair caught on fire, and they, I will, I will lose employees and I will gain employees over this. Just, we'll get it right, or we'll keep going until we get it right.
I understand.
So I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna put up with the type of performance we had this weekend.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And does, is there a procedural process that this is going to, like, to be approved, or is this pretty much starting almost immediately type of system?
It's immediate.
Okay. Thank y'all very much. I really appreciate it.
If y'all are, great, it's immediate.
I would have texted you yesterday, but I really honestly forgot.
You can. Knock on the door.
I really forgot you, that you could do that.
I think I know where I live, too. You just go knock on the door.
You're still in the firing squad.
Oh, you're fine.
Ms. Ponder, Mr. Braden, did you, did you have questions or comments for the commissioner?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Some of the concerns I have, it was my understanding that the TDC, TDD, they contribute $260,000 a year for beach cleanup for Destin. Is that even close to being accurate?
(inaudible) stay up here, Craig. It's part, it's part of a much larger budget, and it's intermingled, and I heard that number two, but I couldn't, I would not be right if I sat here. that number two, but I couldn't, I, I would not be right if I sat here today and say that's the number. I'd have to completely unwind it from the budget. It's all intermeshed right now between staff and equipment and.
So, so we'd have to go to the TDD and, and ask them what they?
No, I, I just got to go through the exercise. There's one beach budget for Oaklus Island, Destin, it's all combined. Obviously, we have some staff that primarily rake the beaches here. We can separate trash tickets and stuff like that. But it's intermixed with parks, it's intermixed with other stuff that we do throughout, throughout the county. It's not just the beaches. It's kind of a, a TDD budget per se for beach side stuff and non-beach side stuff, related to tourists.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. I guess, you know, when we had our own private contractor sweeping the beaches, it was getting done every day. And, and that's kind of what we expected and what we, you know, loved to see. It's like when I go skiing, the slopes are groomed every night. And when I hit them first thing in the morning, they're beautiful. And that's the way we like our beaches to look. The only thing that concerns about this is like the central area will be swept, or beach will be cleaned on Monday. And then it won't be cleaned again all week long until the next following Monday.
It'll be cleaned every day to rake. It'll be raked Monday.
It'll be raked Monday.
Right.
But then that central, central section won't be raked again until the, the next Monday. So, the central section will, will sit all week without being raked. The trash will be picked up, but it won't be raked.
That's correct.
And, and we're, we're, we're used to every day, especially during the summer, is, I guess what, what we were getting before the county took it over. And then we have in bold letters, depending on staffing availability, below is the, the machine cleaning schedule. So, we're not even guaranteed one day a week on, according to this schedule.
What's that? What was that part, Councilman?
It, it, it says depending, that depending on staffing availability, below is the machine cleaning schedule. And the schedule is it'll be cleaned, central location will be cleaned on Mondays.
All right, here. He's reading this additional service.
The west, yeah, the west will be cleaned on Wednesday, and the east end will be cleaned on Friday. So, we're, we're not even guaranteed that some of this stuff will only be cleaned once a week.
We're trying to guarantee you that we'll clean it one day. I'm not sure that even though we had a contract for daily cleaning or five days, I'm not sure we were getting clean every day according to the staff I thought.
I, I understand that. And it's hard. I mean, you're going to have days, you've got rain days, you've got days that the tractor's broke or tore down, or staff is, is up. But I'm, I'm just going on something that, you know, if this beach goes again for two weeks and hadn't been swept, is it, well, you know, you agreed to this, and it says, you know...
We're, we're, we're trying to guarantee that it'll be done at least once a week. And if you look at the other handout from Escambia County, Santa Rosa County, all those counties up and down, the panhandle do one day a week. Some of them do it less than that, some of them don't do it certain times of year, some don't do it at all. Walton County doesn't do it at all. The only exception would be Hilton Sandeston Resort, which the private contractor does, does it for there.
Right.
Private, so I don't.
That, they may be fine with, with, with one day a week or not at all. I just know our residents are, are not, the, the $500,000, $514,000 in 2020 for Destin, that's what was spent on beach cleaning disposal cost?
Yes, sir. Those, those, well, I, I don't, I think you're looking at pounds there, not necessarily dollars. Those are pounds of trash.
So, that's pounds of trash?
Yes, sir.
Oaklus County Beach Cleaning Disposal Cost, it was, it's $514,340 pounds?
Correct. I, I think I had a staff member prepare this. Those are pounds.
Those are pounds?
Those are pounds.
Do we know how much it costs?
Yes, I can get you those figures if you want. Those, there's a tipping fee associated, obviously, with all those poundage.
Okay.
But I think what we wanted to show is just the, you mentioned the previous contractor, they, they hauled off 414,000 pounds. And immediately after we took over, we started hauling off a lot more. And of course, it corresponds somewhat with tourism, but it's two and a half times the amount of trash that was generated back then. And I think that, Mike, seven years ago, yeah, tourism's gone up 77% in the same timeframe, too.
And my final question would be, is, is the county, they, would they be against Destin taking our own beach clean services back over like we've had it for years and getting our money from the TDD? And even have to adjust our budget and ourself and clean our own beaches?
I, I, I think we, we're, I think that's something for my board of county commissioners to obviously decide. But I would tell you that I, I don't think we're going to be interested in doubling our budget to clean the beaches. I think we'd be open to, if, if the beaches aren't being capped at one day a week, I think we'd be interested in expanding that or looking at that. If we aren't picking up trash enough, we go to two tabs a week, I mean, two times a day, excuse me, or we do it, you know, on these peak holidays or more trash pickups on the weekend. All those kind of things are open. I think Dr. Ramswell also mentioned some ideas of the vendors. I think the vendors can assist us a lot more. There's a lot more things that can be done, once we look into this a little bit and really try and get to the bottom of it. But if it's not being done satisfactory, we'll keep revisiting it until we get it right.
So, whatever the, whatever the TDD is, would, would give in your, in your budget or the money that they give the county to clean Dustin beaches, you would be against them giving us that money and we take care of our own beaches and the county?
It, it's not, number one, it's not a decision. But if it were static and you tell me it was going to be static for a period of 10 years or a period of time, I'd be open to that. But I, I would tell you that we also get some economies of scale just between staffing and manpower. And we, we deploy from other county resources as well to, to make some of these services up on the weekend. We hire temporary staff. I mean, we, a dollar's a dollar. I mean, if, if.
Right. But is that not how it worked before? Before the county took it over, when the sandman was cleaning it? I mean, who was paying for that?
The county paid for that.
That, but that didn't come out of the TD, TDC?
Yes, that was county, county's contractor, county services. Yes, sir.
The TDC funded it?
For all countywide. Again, we got economies of scale for a contractor even, because we did Oaklus Island and Destin.
Okay.
Destin didn't do it by themselves, and we didn't segregate the services to lose our economies of scale.
And that, that's a misnomer, I believe. I looked into it. We have never, us, contracted for private beach cleaning during this whole time.
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's where the disconnect was at. Awesome. Thanks a lot for, for coming here, because I like to say you get this hearsay and, you know, somebody on the street says they, they donating, or they're not donating, but TDC's giving them $260,000 a year, $300,000. I like to hear it rough in the horse's mouth. So, we, we're all on the same page.
I'll get you the figure. I mean, yeah, we'll see.
Mr. Destin has a question, I believe.
Just a quick comment. And I appreciate you all and your attitude when Mr. Ponder and I had a lot more dark hair and we're both councilmen. Our relationship with the county was not nearly this good. It was mostly fighting. And so, I appreciate the attitude we have now. And we want to help you and supplement if necessary, because as you know, the condition of Dustin's beaches is very, very important to Dustin's economic engine. And so, as we go forward, I have every belief that you all are going to do everything that you can to make it look really nice. If it's not quite as nice, you know, we always have the option of trying to supplement. And, you know, while we can't tell the staff to do anything, we can certainly enter into a contract with someone to get out there and, and help y'all. If, if it needs a few more days, we come to that conclusion. But I want to thank you for your attitude and your, your going forward, because it's certainly different. And, and the attitude on the beach purchases and, and a lot of the other things that the county's worked with us lately, I really do appreciate that effort. Come from the good old bad days.
Thanks, Mr. Destin. Appreciate that.
All right. Any other comments from council? I want to thank, oh, this Ram, Dr. Ramswell, I'm sorry.
No worries. I did want to just clarify, because I didn't have a chance to look at this before it came. So, I'm trying to absorb and listen at the same time. So, I do want to just clarify, on here, it's showing beach machine cleaning between November and February, none, and then March 1st to October 31st, twice a month.
That's for Noriega.
None, where's none?
Machine cleaning for Destin is actually once per month, and it's checked two days per week. It's actually midway through, just depending on staffing availability below is the machine.
Where'd you see none on there?
She went to, uh, here.
The bottom of.
Oh, oh, no, oh, I see.
That's Noriega Point. We haven't been cleaning that. And again, the discussions I've had with your staff is, we are, things are changing even at Nor, Noriega Point. So, if we need to change that, we're not opposed to changing that. What we want to do is kind of see how that goes. And, and even when I talked to staff today, we stepped up the trash pickup by Noriega Point, because they're telling me, hey, people are finding it, they're getting there, we need to pick up the trash more often. So, we went to seven days a week for May through October 31st. We had previously five days. And we had three days from March 1st, April 30th. And so, we're stepping up, increasing that more. In some areas, we're going to do twice a day, if we can work that out with staff. And we'll, we'll definitely, and I'll tell you, we'll take care of the overtime that they had this weekend if they sent us the bill.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Mr. Brayden, go ahead, Doc.
No, that's okay. I'm, I guess I'm just sort of absorbing and thinking at the same time, which is never a good thing. So, I'll let somebody else go.
Well, the good news is you have Mel's cell number. So, you got it.
I literally did not pester you with this, because I was trying to work through Webb, because I know he was already engaged in conversation.
Sure.
One, one last question from Mr. Brayden. Go ahead, sir.
I just want to say thank you for being here. You know, I learned some things that I was misinformed over. It's a breath of fresh air to be able, you know, work with you guys. And, you know, anything we can do to help, you know, like you said, we're all in this together. Anything, you know, we might be able to ask our city manager, direct the staff to do to, and, and maybe these beach vendors are going to help pick up the trash, help you guys out. So, you know, that's, and my comment on that was, is, as long as they're working with us, we'll, we'll loosen up the rains a little bit and let them, you know, do a little bit more, maybe, you know, use their vehicles on the beach to, to do more maintenance and stuff, that they'll help us out. So, I'm going to help you guys out. So, it's, that's the only way we, we can get this thing done, is working together. But thank you so much for being here and, and answering our questions. And so, we know what to tell our, our residents and visitors, you know, hey, this is what's going to happen, you know. So, we just don't sound stupid when they call and say, when's the beach, beach going to be raked? You know, I thought it was going to be raked. So, but thanks again. I'm, thank you for both of you.
Your, your staff has been absolutely great to work with, and we're going to continue to work with them and, and make this better. But I, I've really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Craig.
You have some mail, Dr. Ramswell?
No, I'll just, some of it has to do with just the different costs and tipping fees and just looking through all the stuff. But I know y'all said you were going to look into that and send some of it over. So, I'll just wait on that.
And again, as, as we relate to each of you, I'm not saying this is a perfect, flawless, let's continue to make it better. And so, if you see a way we can continue to improve, like Craig said, he talked to Webb and Lance today, and, and on the phone call, improved two sections in Noriega, just on the phone call alone. And so, that's the kind of relationship I think we can all have, that Mr. Destin was alluding to, where we are now, is this, I think, we have the relationship, make the call, then listen, prove it, I think, then, then maybe go in a different direction. That'd be, that'd be my submission to each of you, is, is let's focus on that and, and keep working with you and everybody on the council up here to keep making it better.
Yeah, I think I've come a long way from the time I actually made a motion to secede from Oaklus County. So, yeah, thank you for all your hard work.
Sir.
No, please don't.
It was an honor to have you here tonight. Craig, thank you so much for the information, and I look forward to working with the entire Oaklus County Commission and, and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might just have one comment. I, this is a working document, as Mr. Ponder has said. So, I would suggest that after spring break, between spring break and summer, we go through this and do some analysis and get back with them on some suggestions we have.
Yeah, we can, we can make that an agenda item, no, no trouble. We can have our staff help facilitate a report of where we're at today. And then that will open us up for discussion to come up with some ideas that we can bring back to the, to Craig and, and our commission. So, we, we'll do that. Probably mid-May would probably be the time, a couple weeks before Memorial Day weekend, to put that together. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. All right. We got that out of the way. Now, we're going to do public comment. And like I said, this is going to be a very long meeting tonight. We've got a lot to do. So, let's, we'll try to, at 7:30, wherever we're at at the time, I'm going to stop and take a break at 7:30, just so y'all are aware. All right. So, up next, public comment. And what we're going to do is, I want to remind, remind everybody that you have three minutes. When you come up, state your name and your address. Let all your comments be directed to me or the council as a whole. And try to keep everything civil. When you get about 15 seconds away from your three minutes, I'll ask for you to wrap up your comments. And I, and I want to remind you that you have another opportunity at the end of the meeting to make public comment on anything you want. Again, that's not a public hearing. And, and so, if you want to stick around for three or four more hours, you'll be able to comment on some of the things we've talked about and done at the very end of the meeting. So, right now, I'm going to open it up. And we have a distinguished public commenter. So, I'm going to look over to this side of the room and see if he's going to step up to the plate. And we'll start this way and go that way. Come on up, sir.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name's Parker Destin. I live at 730 Kelly Street. I will be briefed tonight. I appreciate that introduction. That's more than I really deserve. But what I'm, what I'm fishing for tonight is I need some legislative sponsors. I'm here on behalf of the Emerald Coast Fitness Foundation, who is operating and has the lease at the community swimming pool, right down the road from us here. And what we would like to do is be placed on the next agenda, so we can discuss a fun, potential funding request. As some of you who were with me in the last five years or so, recall, the council supported the Fitness Foundation financially to the tune of around $60,000 to get it reopened, I believe around 2018-ish. It's been a success. It's been running in the black ever since. And I believe about two years ago, the Fitness Foundation came and asked for about $10,000 for a new scoreboard and timing board, so that they can host more meets, which more meets means more economic activity for all the travel teams to come in and use that facility. So, we've got another funding request, the details of which we will go into, so long as we get some council sponsors to put us on the agenda at the next meeting. And if it pleases the council, that's the request. I know that we've had, I know, I think Johnny swims at the pool. I think, I think, listen, I'm going to see you there soon. And, and, and I know that my father supported the original capital outlay of about $1.3 million to get the pool open back around 2006. And I know that Dr. Ramswell was a lifeguard and, and has supported every request that has come before council, because she passionately believes in, in the value that the, the facility provides to all of our community citizens. And I know Councilmember Brayden's been a help in the past for sure, supporting us. So, that's my request. And if we could get on the agenda, it would be, it'd be wonderful. Thank you.
That's true. I have swam at that pool.
That is true.
True statement.
That's right. Some of the lifeguards told me they saw you there.
Any questions for Mr. Destin?
During open hours?
Any questions for Mr. Destin while he's at the podium? Go ahead, Mr. Brayden.
Did you say what, what your, they need to buy or what the money's for?
The plan is, I think, for some funding requests for some swimming programs for the summer, mostly to help supplement the budget, the fact that COVID hit the pool pretty hard. If we can figure out a way to promote more swimming lessons for kids and some stuff for seniors, it'll keep the facility going for the foreseeable future.
Do we know a, a roundabout number that?
I think that's why he wants one of y'all to sponsor getting on the agenda, so they can throw us the whole.
Yeah, I can throw you a whole, I can throw you the whole package of the request in detail at the next meeting. But I think it's around $25,000.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I mean, I don't mind sponsoring. I just didn't want you coming in here looking for about four million bucks.
No, no, we're not talking about that.
Trying to get a number. I know, I was thinking.
It was that, it was that amount, he just stroked a check himself.
Yeah. If you guys just want to write me a blank check and I'll, I promise you, you know, it'll be fine.
We'll, we'll get you on there, sir.
Mr. Destin, I do have a quick question.
Sure.
Have y'all explored working with the community center and Ms. Lisa about doing swimming lessons and having them advertise and just doing something?
Yeah, there's a, there's preliminary discussions that have evolved. And I know that staff met with some of the members of the Emerald Coast Fitness Foundation Board last month. And I think there's a whole slew of different things that we could partner on that could really benefit. I know that there's some issues with transportation. But I think if everybody gets their, their, their minds on the same sheet of course music and pull them in the same direction, I think we can accomplish and over, overcome some of those issues.
Terrific. And I know Destin High School will be working with them as well.
Oh, yeah. Very much so.
Swimming classes, swim team. Swimming classes, swim team, aerobics, WSI.
I know the foundation's very much looking forward to that partnership as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm working on my way slowly. Step up to the plate. Don't be shy. She'll wipe off the microphone and then go ahead, just turn a red button on, leave it on for them.
Hi, my name is Rachel Kelly, 106 Benning Drive, Destin, Florida, Unit 7. I'm sorry. I do not do public speaking. This is my first time, so I'm very nervous. Good evening, Mayor Jarvis and council members.
Hey. We all put our pants on one leg at the time, too.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I'm good. Okay, thank you. Okay. So I came here today because we are looking for some guidance and possibly some interjection. I am a small business owner here in Destin. We, the business was established in 2015. We just purchased it in 2019. And within our first six months, we were faced with the shutdown from COVID. I own a very highly rated tattoo shop and piercing salon. We also offer henna for families. We have artists who have been voted top artist in the panhandle. We are trying, we try to provide more than just a tattoo shop environment. You know, we pierce for small children so that they're pierced in a sterile environment. But we are faced with something right now that we really need some help with. Our building was put up for sale in December. And we now have found out that the building is selling. And we have nowhere to go. They are going to knock the building down. And due to the restrictions on zoning, because we are a tattoo shop and there is some stereotypes or stigmas put onto us, we are kind of pigeonholed on where we can go. I have found a couple of different spots, but they're not zoned for us. There are, there's actually another shop in one of the zonings that we were looking at. And the people are ready to rent to us that we could start build out and things that we need to do for the health department. But we can't move. And I was met with silence from the zoning department for quite a while. You know, I would get some of my messages returned, some of my emails returned when I asked for a sit down because I didn't understand what all this was. I'm a first time business owner. I was in corporate sales before, but I didn't deal with owning a business. You know, we were just met with silence. My, I'm not, I'd never heard back from anybody. We've tried to come here, they were closed. Call, messages, nothing. I finally met with somebody the day we found out the building sold and was going to be knocked down. They're telling us to do a application for revising, I guess, the zoning for conditional use for tattoo shops. But we're not asking to open it up to everyone, every tattoo parlor, so that we're just littered with them. We're already an existing business and have been here for six years. We're asking for a variance, a waiver, someone to step in and help us to where we can, you know, go somewhere and still be a part of this community. You know, we do, I do outreach. We are, we do fundraising for the dog rescue. Like, we're trying to be more a part of the community since I purchased the business. And we're just asking for some guidance and help.
My, my first advice would be never let that happen again with staff.
Okay.
You can, I know my cell phone number is here with the city. Call them, ask for it. They'll give it to you. Call a council member. Can I ask where the business is at or where it's going to be tore down, which building?
Yes, so we're right behind Sexton Seafood.
Okay.
So it's on Benning Drive there. That's where we're at.
And where are you trying to move to?
We're trying to go to, we found a spot that's open right now. It's about 1.1 miles. It's in the Target Shopping Center, so it's not like in the housing or anything like that. But the, they said that that's town-city mixed use, or town-center. But we are not allowed to go in there because we are classified as P-8. And we're a tattoo shop, so we're not allowed to go there.
P-8?
Yeah, that's what the lady told me our code was.
Okay, so a tattoo shop.
Yeah, tattoo and piercing salon. But there is another shop already in that zoning, and I don't know if they were in there before it changed.
Yeah, no, the.
I think what we can do here is we can just, we can direct staff to look into this and we're trying to get you some answers.
Okay. And I know there is a woman that did tell me that I had to do all the revising and stuff. But like I said, we were just, we weren't trying to revise it to open it up to all.
Right.
It would just be a conditional use for that.
For our particular.
Just for that place.
Yeah. And I think we'll have someone look into it, respond to you and give you a pathway to try to address it in a reasonable manner. And if it means there's variances, there's a process for that. But you've got to be able to start the process. And that seems like what's been the difficult part here. So that's what we'll do. All right?
And if we, if we, we don't want to leave this and we can't. We won't survive, so.
So who would you like for her to contact? Lance?
If you want to leave your contact information with me, then I'll get you to the right people.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. I'll get it from you.
Okay.
He'll start the chain of command for you. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Next, anyone up here in the center? Come on up. We're going to wipe this down real quick for you. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Barnes. I'm a property manager for 613 Magnolia Drive. I believe there is currently either a technical error or misapplication in regards to the square footage being pulled from Okaloosa County and used to determine the amount of fees that you pay for a short-term rental application. So what's currently happening, when you submit your application, it's pulling the total area from the county. And that total area includes things like decks, patios and driveways in addition to the actual living area. And then it charges you a fee based on that. But I believe it's supposed to be pulling just the heated and cooled area. Because I believe the intent of the square footage being used is the higher occupancy homes basically put more of a draw on the compliance officer's hours and stuff like that. So I think it's either a misapplication or a technical error.
Have you contacted?
I did. And there seems to be some confusion among the code enforcement officers as well. They're not quite sure what's going on.
All right. Who have you spoken with, just for the record?
Bill Morales.
All right.
And also, one last thing in regards to that, if you look on the City of Destin website, it does say per unit area. So I believe that that pretty much means, you know, living area, right?
I've got a confused look from our land use attorney, so I'm going to look to her. Would you like to say something, Kim?
Yeah, it's just that we, Joey and I hadn't heard about this yet, so we will look at it and talk with staff. We actually haven't heard about the past two items, so the tattoo parlor or this. So we'll get back with you.
Thanks. All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, for bringing that to our attention.
I saw your brow go like, ah.
It was two in a row.
I know. I know. Body language is everything. All right.
Mayor, this on the website, sir, when you were trying to do your application, is that what you're saying? When you went in to pay the fees, that the website is?
Right. It pulls the data automatically with your application and tells you how much to pay. So for instance, for a smaller home, you're supposed to pay like $500. But you know, the biggest homes pay $700. But it's pulling the wrong square footage automatically. So it's pulling the wrong, wrong data figure from the county. And it's charging people more money than they should be paying.
So are you in standby to pay to get your fees taken care of because you don't want to get ripped off, basically, right?
I mean, I don't call it ripped off. I think it's just a technical issue, really.
Right. But I'm just, we need to know, so that you can give them your phone number so they can verify what you're seeing, where it's at, and make sure that the computer system is corrected across the board. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I have a feeling it's not just me being affected by this stuff.
You pretty much count on it.
Yeah, you can bet. But you're the only one that's been brave enough to come and say, this is an issue. We need to fix this right away.
Right. Well, thanks for your time.
All right. Looking over here, all the way over to the left. Anybody have anything to want to come up and make public comment? Seeing none, do we have anybody queued up on the webinar?
No, sir.
Nope. And Ray, any emails or text messages, sir? All right. Well, at this point, I'm going to close the public comment period of the meeting. And I just want to remind you once again, you'll have another opportunity at the very end. So we're going to move right on to our city manager's report. Lance, take it away, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4A is our annual, or our monthly report from Ms. Crystal Strickland regarding the capital project status. And I'll turn it over to Crystal.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So the first item we have here is our monthly capital project status update. For this year's budget of $19 million, we have either expended or encumbered $10 million so far to date. The next beach property purchase will, that will happen at the end of May, will take an additional $4 million. And then we're also working on items related to the crosstown connector project from the TRIP and FDOT grant, as well as the TDC contributions before we get the remaining encumbrances towards the crosstown connector going. So that is my update on the capital improvement plan. Any questions?
Any questions? None. Go right ahead, right into the next one.
The second report I have for you this evening is our year-to-date budget versus actuals for the period ending January 31st, 2021. January always looks really great because this is the month when we've received most of our ad valorem tax revenues, which account for over 60% of our annual income. And yet we only have five months of expenditures at this point in time. So our financial reports look really good right now. I'm also keeping a close eye on the projections through the end of the year. Right now, our unassigned fund balance is projected to be about $1.6 million. I like to keep that at above $2 million because we need the cash flow for all of our cost reimbursement grants. Which leads me to the next item, which is debt financing, which will help that unassigned fund balance bounce back up to where we need it to be. So on to the next item. 4C, debt financing, bank request for proposals. So here tonight, we have our draft request for proposals. We would like to put $12.5 million out on the street. $4.7 million of that will be new debt related to the beach property acquisitions. And we are also looking at two pieces of, two other pieces of debt that have a similar timeframe in maturity to come together to make that full $12.5 million. Rates are still pretty good. They have been sneaking up over the last couple of months, but they're still pretty good. So we have, we're still staying optimistic that we could get some good rates back on that. The proposals will be due back to the city in mid-April. A bid committee will come together with technical advisors to review the proposals. And they will bring something back to the first meeting in May. With that, I'll just open it up for any questions regarding the bank request for proposals.
I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion for, ready? I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to issue the attached RFP.
Second.
I got a motion. I have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Go ahead, Mr. Destin.
Just for the record, Crystal, how much money do we expect to save or net or whatever word we use?
We could save anywhere from $100,000 to $300,000 in interest expense over this tenure period.
Well, $200,000 would be a good place in between, huh? Well, anytime we can save $200,000, it's probably a wise thing to do. Thanks.
Okay, let's go. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Abell?
Yes.
Best over there?
Yes.
Mr. Destin? Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
And Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
Eyes have it unanimous, so moved.
Mr. Mayor, item 4D is the inventory of citywide right-of-ways with waterfront access. This was dealt within referendum form back in November. And Mr. Zenguzi is bringing the list forward for your approval.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Thank you, Lance. If you recall, last year, we had a difficult case regarding the vacation of right-of-way in Harbor Lane. The conclusion of that meeting, city council asked us to do a complete inventory of properties, right-of-ways and easements that have waterfront access. And so we've been looking through all our documentation, maps and everything to kind of look through these, for these properties, right-of-ways and easements. And I think we have a fairly good understanding of where they are. And so this evening, we're giving you a preview of our research. And if there's anything we've missed, please let us know so we can include it in. We think we roughly have almost 30 assets of that combination. And I have Mr. Joe Boddy here to kind of walk you through the location of these pieces.
Good evening, mayor and council. As, yes, it's the citywide inventory of the city interests that have waterfront. We actually have it broken down into right-of-ways, which are in red on your map. Properties, which are in green on your map, and easements, which are in yellow. There are 30. It is 30 interests there. And they're broken down into 14 right-of-ways, 10 properties and six easements. And at this point, I will take any questions.
This looks great. I want to thank you guys for pulling this together. I know there are certainly more than I had thought there were, which is a good thing. I do know that one of the things that we had talked about when, the other piece of property that was up for debate and whatever, we won't go into that. But one of the things we had talked about was cleaning some of them up. Maybe some of them posting signage, but most of them keeping as more of just informal accesses that are actually accessible for our residents. So is the next step then in this process to sort of determine which ones are best suited more for public use or private use? Is that something you want direction from council? Or what is your goal?
You said you can direct us to do that if it's the wish of the council, yes.
I think that's best. I mean, y'all intimately know these by now, having spent so much time pulling it together. I think that makes the most sense, is to come back to us with some suggestions on ones that might be better suited for public. Maybe none of them are, but certainly, you know, costs and looking at how we can clean them up and provide them for people to enjoy.
Okay, we'll certainly do that analysis and also give you a state of the condition they are in. I know some of them do have some violations.
Encroachment.
Right. So we'll give you a full picture and then the options that are available to you.
Wonderful. When do you think that might be? I know you've got a lot going on, but.
If you give us two months, I think that'll be fair.
Is that fine with council?
I think that's great. And I love the idea of using our current city-owned properties to pursue water access. You know, I mean, it's, these are great options to have instead of having to, you know, go buy anything else, which I know we're going to do. But this is a great starting point to hopefully provide access to certain bayous or different water fronts, if it works.
I live in one of those neighborhoods, and I'm not sure you're going to have a whole bunch of people real excited about trying to open up water access to the public for folks coming in their neighborhood. Because we do have neighborhood water park access.
They were upset when we were about to close it down.
We'll have that discussion, I guess, when he gets it to us. But I think, like our, I think my subdivision was planted in 1954. I think over there around First and Second Street was planted in the 30s or 20s. So some of those have been unused for 90 years, 60 years, stuff like that. And so I think we're going to have to listen closely to the communities where they exist a lot.
I agree with you. But we're also talking about options that they can show us in two months from now, just to talk about. months from now, just to talk about. But we're not sitting here right now asking to open up a private beach access on, you know, property, but...
Certainly, I would think even residents in your neighborhood may not want it for the public, but cleaning it up so even y'all could utilize it.
We're using the one that's cleaned up right now, and it's really nice. That worked out good.
Terrific.
We've been in some really tough fights over that. And I just want all the members to remember the difference between right-of-ways, own, and easements. They all have certain restrictions, with the exception of the ones we own clearly, and we're probably using those. The rest of them have a lot of strings attached to what you can do. So we'll get a review of hopefully when we get our review, we'll get a synopsis of what actually can be done there.
Yeah. So that's another little item. Melissa, Kim, when when you give us that presentation is just educate us on on the allowable uses. And also maybe some history on the intent, if you can find it, of those different accesses and stuff.
All right. We'll try to get that information back to you before the first council budget workshop, so that if if some of these turn out to be areas that we do want to try to improve, then we can talk about it during that budgeting process and allocate some funds.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So continue on.
Thanks, sir. Item four E, I believe, Council member Destin requested an update on our paid parking throughout the city, and Mr. Warren has put that together and is going to bring that forward for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Up there it is. Fantastic. It was requested for staff to bring back an update on our paid parking lots, and we're happy to do so tonight. Tonight, we will briefly review a history of the paid parking lots, the program itself, as well as provide some current information on our operations. We will also outline some things being done to improve our wayfinding and use of those paid parking lots. Next slide, please. On the next slide, we're gonna see a summary timeline of our paid parking in Destin. And basically, what you see on this timeline is a brief history of the program. Some highlights of that timeline include the purchase of the Marler parking lot back in two thousand nine. That was for three point one million, implementing a pilot paid parking program in two thousand seventeen. That was basically an hourly base program for a very small fee at one dollar per hour and fifty cents every additional hour, and also additional changes to the fees in two thousand nineteen. Looking at that slide, you can see that in the Harbor District alone, we have spent over four million dollars to help facilitate public parking. Next slide, please. We basically have two districts for our paid parking. We have our Harbor District and our Beach District. Tonight, we will begin with the Harbor District. You can see on the map itself the Marler Street and then the kind of a conglomerate of the different ones over there by the community center and including the community center itself. Next slide. Here is a summary of the revenue and the transactions for Zerby Community Center and Marler Paid Parking. These are the Harbor District parking lots. And as you can see from the chart displayed in two thousand eighteen, we had a higher number of transactions. That was really due to the fact that it was an hourly rate, and customers would keep adding having to add to their sessions every time they wanted to renew for an additional hour. Really, the challenge with it with this was the low fee per hour is that the transaction triggered a base transaction fee. Every every request for an additional hour would trigger a base transaction fee, which really basically brought in very little revenue. It was a low net revenue for it. And also was frustrating for our customers because they were constantly having to renew their time. So in two thousand nineteen, council approved a simpler design, which was five dollars for twenty-four hours. And it's really reduced our expenditures on transaction fees and also simplified the system for our customers. As you notice, if you look at that trend, twenty twenty was down from twenty nineteen. We have to assume that was from COVID, and that was about a thirty percent reduction in revenue. Next slide, please. This is a basic chart that breaks down the total number of transactions in the Harbor Districts by relative parking lots. As you can tell, the community center is the most used parking lot, which makes sense due to the fact it's really the closest to the amenities and for and the destinations that our tourists are going to. Paid parking has certainly helped to manage our non-community center traffic. That traffic used to really totally consume the community center during tourist season. You know, it provided a difficult chance for our patrons to actually use the parking lot to visit the community center, and also a difficult situation for our staff to manage that parking lot. Next slide, please. Here, we dive a little bit deeper into the Marler Street parking lot. You can see that year-over-year transactions for that lot. Please note the effects that COVID also had in again in twenty twenty. That's about a thirty percent reduction. Next slide, please. This is a line graph, and what it does is it really provides a pattern of our number of transactions throughout the year. So from twenty eighteen, which is green, you can see that really most of the transactions do occur during peak season. And then you can see that you have some peaks throughout the year, spring break, and specifically, one I'll call out is the Destin Seafood Festival. If you'll note, in twenty nineteen, we had a flat line during COVID when the beaches were closed. And again, we saw thirty percent less transactions since. But interesting, if you look at twenty nineteen, sixty-four percent of our transactions occurred during the hundred days of summer due to COVID kind of shutting down the spring break last year. Eighty percent of our transactions in twenty twenty were during the hundred days of summer. So I think this demonstrates that our Marler parking lot in our Harbor District really are event-driven and and routine-driven and also peaks tourist season-driven. Next slide, please. An example maintenance cost for perspective on these parking lots, because with everything, everything has maintenance. And as you know, in our budgeting, we've been really going to a renewal replacement fund. This helps put this in perspective for our parking lots. Estimated physical maintenance is about sixty-six hundred dollars a year. That includes all resurfacing, painting, and mowing and other miscellaneous costs. Electricity cost for lighting for the Marler parking lot is estimated about sixteen hundred a year. Next slide, please. So in summary, the findings for the Harbor District paid parking lots, you know, we went through that it was based in twenty eighteen on an hourly base. We went to a simpler fee in twenty nineteen, which improved our efficiency and eliminated a lot of confusion. And twenty twenty, COVID really affected the transactions. And then also, it seems to be that the Harbor District are special event-driven and peak tourism-driven at those spots. I'd also like to have some notes that Mr. Zenguzi provided on this, which was that the city's comprehensive plan does designate the Harbor District as a festive mixed-use park marketplace and encourages vibrant tourist commercial development. As such, public parking in the Harbor District is one of the biggest land use challenges that the city faces. To help address the parking issue, the Conference of Plan Policy two point one point three eighteen encourages the establishment of community parking facilities, and the development of the Marler and Zerby parking lots are consistent with that policy. So now we can move to the beach paid parking lot, or I'm sorry, the Beach District. Thank you. So beach parking was not implemented until July first of twenty twenty. If you notice, we did yet see the revenue for the year there was a hundred and sixteen thousand. Our transaction costs, our transaction count was about twenty-three thousand. The rate for our Beach District is five dollars per five hours. The beach paid parking program, again, was implemented in July, and it provides increased availability of our water access parking lots for visitors and residents. Overflow parking by short-term rentals in our beach beach parking areas have decreased once we put this system in place. So far in fiscal year twenty-one, over five hundred resident parking passes have been issued for our Beach District. Next slide, please. Here is a simple pie chart, which demonstrates where all the transactions occur in the Beach District. As you can tell, they're roughly it is fifty-fifty. Gold Shore Drive and Noriega Point is fifty percent of our parking transactions, and the other fifty percent are in the Crystal Beach District. Next slide, please. Here's another line graph. This one's a little more consistent, at least from July to December, even though it's on a decreasing trend, was what you would expect. It has a lot more peaks than the Marler Street and Harbor District throughout the year. Next slide, please. Our enforcement of paid parking in twenty twenty, we had over nine hundred tickets issued through our passport system. Six hundred of those tickets were paid, and three over three hundred were not. So it's about a two-thirds paid, one-third not paid. How that works is all that is managed through the passport system, so staff is not trying to chase down unpaid tickets. It's automated, and it's actually done through the passport system. Next slide, please. Michael, if you don't mind, if you can help us out on the wayfinding signage.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few weeks ago, I was vacationing down with Mickey Mouse and Donald Duck, and you all had this discussion on some wayfinding signage. And so when we got back off of vacation, staff jumped immediately on this. We have purchased and already installed nine new sign placards with directional arrows in the West Destin District. West Destin District, that's right, the Harbor District. If you go to the next slide, thank you. I know it's kind of hard to see, but the blue dots. There you go. So the kind of the medium blue dots, and you'll see some down around the intersection of Cybert and Calhoun and Zerby and Stallman Avenue, those areas. Those signs actually got installed today. We've got nine of them set up. So our visitors that when they're coming over the bridge or they're coming along ninety-eight headed westbound, they'll see some signage. When they get on the back roads, they'll see, and it'll direct them to either the community center, Zerby, or Marler Street parking lots. And there are some pictures of the fellows putting them up today. And that's what they look like. There are some additional signs proposed, and we just have to order those and get those in and installed. In addition, if you note the the some of them are yellow. You'll see along ninety-eight. Staff is currently working with FDOT District Three in Chipley to get a permit to put up some wayfinding signage to our paid parking lots on ninety-eight, and that process is ongoing.
Michael, can I ask a quick question? It looks like some of the blue dots are right across ninety-eight from the yellow dots. Is that because you're actually considering the ones that are there, the blue dots are on our right-of-way of ninety-eight?
Most of the yellow dots that you see on the west end are on ninety-eight and would require an FDOT permit. The ones that are blue, I don't believe any of those are on FDOT right-of-way, and we've installed nine out of the ten already. We did have to tweak some of the locations because of the the ground condition. A few places that we were proposing on putting them were paved, and I didn't want to put them in a parking lot. But they have been, and certainly, it's easy to move a signpost. And so as this process evolves, we may want to tweak the location of a sign or two as the year goes on.
So like the ones that the blue dots that you have there at Calhoun and Cybert essentially near, well, I guess it wouldn't be Cybert, but Calhoun in ninety-eight and then Stallman in ninety-eight, are those on our pri? I'm just wondering, because I know what you just said, but
Those are those are on
The signs are there.
I'm sorry, those are city, those are city right-of-ways.
Okay, okay. That's what I was double checking. Thank you.
That's a quick question, Michael. Has the has the thought been discussed putting one on the bridge before we get to the end of the bridge?
I don't think we've run that route yet. That would require a DOT permit as well.
Just to consider on the bridge before you, because, you know, if you're want if we're gonna send them down Cybert, they're probably gonna not maybe not see the, I don't know, just extra time to see public parking is north there, north, just a thought.
Does that does that this is just a thought. I know that there's coming off the bridge, I make the if I come from Fort Walton to make that turn there to go down Calhoun or Cybert, it's that turning lane is, I mean, a lot of times just out, you know?
We won't recommend any, at this point in time, I'm not recommending any left turns from ninety-eight to north of the northvest and where there's not a signal. So those those blue signs are, if you're on there, to tell you that there is public parking ahead.
It's the the blue one close to Maguires, west of Maguires, is down the road a little bit. So you actually are on Calhoun when you see it. And they're they're twenty-four by twenty-fours. That's not a large sign. That's a moderately sized sign for the speed limit. Normally, as you increase in speed limit, the sign gets larger and larger. But there's one there, and then when you get to the split where Calhoun and Cybert partways, it'll direct you down to the Zerby. And then once you get to Zerby on Cybert, you can either go straight and park in the Zerby parking lot, or it can direct you up the hill to Zerby to the community center. So you have options.
So I think I heard you say, Don, is we're not recommending people to turn or that short turn lane. We're gonna send them down Stallman at the light, then Zerby to get all the way down to Cybert and use that Cybert Cybert Zerby parking lot. If they want to use that one, that's how they're gonna get there.
So the two places we'd have them turn left are Stallman and Benning. And then that would either you'd either come back to Marler or go down that way. So then the interior signing is to get you to those other lots once we get you off the main road.
James, could you go back to the the slide with the the fellows putting the signs up? Did you have that one?
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, so the if you look at the one on next to the Whataburger, you're already kind of committed on to Stallman. We're not asking you to turn off of ninety-eight. So you're already right there. But most of these are you're already committed on city streets before you see these signs.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking out loud because one of the biggest discussions I've heard or talked about or thought about is a lot of our parking lots, we don't know that they're there. Some people just don't know they're there, which I guess I understand why we're doing the wayfinding. I get that. But that one off of Zerby down there, I mean, it seems like it's gonna be a mission to get there, to direct them there. So I understand it's not recommended turning on that that Stallman turn, but that's the easiest way to get to that those two parking lots down there.
No, I Stallman is where we will recommend.
I'm sorry, not Stallman, just right off the bridge. I mean, if I want to go parking behind Maguires, I feel like coming off the bridge, we'd want to get them off the bridge and immediately turn left to go to those parking lots. But that's not we're we're not wanting them to do that. We're wanting them to hit the light, turn at Whataburger, go down that street, and then make their way around. But it's just a consistent issue. I feel like that, again, we're hiding a parking lot that we have down there for people to easily access it. And I just don't see people going all the way around to get there.
And we we did talk about it. It's primarily, we felt like that we were sacrificing safety to do that. So the the safest route is obviously to tournament, not obviously, the safest route is tournament signal. So we we did look at maybe even when we go to FDOT and getting permission to do the other streets. But again, we don't want to, we don't want to sacrifice safety while you turn. So we have at least considered that.
And the the signs that are yellow on there, the ones that we need FDOT approval, that will help get them off ninety-eight to the lots. They're just not there yet because we don't have approval to put them, correct?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, the yellow dots are also future potential placements on city right-of-way. This is what we've done today and over the past week is phase one.
Roger, Roger. Sounds good. Go ahead, sir.
I think appreciate the signs, but twenty-four, but that's about twelve. So that's an awful little sign to see as you drive by. Speed limit's thirty-five. Everybody's doing forty-five or fifty. So we need some bigger signs somehow to actually designate where the parking lots are. My primary concern with putting this on the issue was to look at the revenue. And the parking lot, Marler, is just not being used. The lot that you referred to, Kevin, down on Cybert, were essentially bought as overflow parking for the community center, and they get used during festivals. For if there's a big event up there, the Marler parking lot, which is our biggest one, and the one that's in the area that needs the most extra parking, is just not being used. So how do we up the usage of that lot is the question. There have been suggestions that we don't charge for it. It would be a small revenue loss, but a revenue loss nonetheless. Can we make it easier by using the credit card machines rather than Can we make it easier by using the credit card machines rather than the apps that we talked, that we heard suggested at the last meeting? I think probably that's a step in the right direction. I don't know if this company that's doing the apps can do that. If, if not, we need to find out who could. And we need to sign that one with some bigger signs, because folks drive right by it. And I've tried to explain where it is, and they go round and round in circles and don't get it. If they could pull in there, stick their credit card in, pay for it easily without an app, you know, the cellphones don't work so well down on the harbor if there's any crowds down there. So I would ask you to look into that.
I, I think what makes that difficult, too, is because of the barbecue shop and the church, the Greek church, there's no sight line for that.
Not from that direction, no.
Not, not going east to west. So a bigger sign, or a sign prior to them getting to that road will be crucial. But I agree with you on the, on the phone deal, because.
My phone doesn't work down there half the time.
On Thursday evenings, we both know, because we do business down there, you might as well put your phone away, because the bandwidth is not good enough.
That's it. So we need to get some scheme to get folks into that parking lot in an easy manner, because it's not being used except for on festival days or other very crowded. And that's really an asset that we need to get back into the, into the public use.
Michael, on that line of thought, you know, we got crosswalk right there at that Marler parking lot. Can we put a public parking sign, a big one on that? Or is that, does FDOT own that? And we have to ask for permission?
In the median?
Yes.
Yes, FDOT does that. But we are hearing what you're saying, and we'll be approaching, we've been dealing with a fellow named Rusty Williams. He's the same fellow that gave us the permits for the Christmas lighting, and we'll be working with him to get recommended sizes and such. Again, because the higher the speed limit, the larger the sign.
Got something, Johnny, you want to say?
Yeah, I just, I think this is awesome. This is, I mean, I've just Googled, I didn't, I've never parked in any of the public parking lots, and I'm ashamed to say that, I just never had, never had to. And so you can find, you can find them on Google. If I was going to Atlanta, if I was going to a baseball game or football game or something like that, I don't have any problem pulling in, pulling a ticket, putting it on my dash, paying the money, whatever it is. I don't think people really have an issue with that, especially out-of-towners. Is there a, I mean, we've got the signs, but what makes sense to me is if we had like a, like what we're talking about, it's public parking next right. You know what I mean? I don't know if you got to do that in the median or on the, you know, the church side or, you know, whatever. But that was just a, just a thought that I had.
All right. If I may, so we've talked, we've been talking about both physical wayfinding and digital wayfinding, and great ideas and a lot of, so many valid points. We have on this, we also are looking into the in-lot pay stations, because we believe that's important. And Matt, are you online right now?
I am.
Could you give us a brief update on where that stands, as well as your efforts in the digital wayfinding?
Yeah, definitely. As, as well as the, the many varieties of ways to pay for parking here, not just by app. However, Passport Parking is a cloud-based program. They don't have any kiosks or things that are there. However, I, we've worked with them, talking to several different cities, Raleigh, North Carolina, Reckon Ridge, they all have a payment system. Even the city of Pensacola uses this. So we're trying to figure out a way to maybe get some integration with a kiosk. However, keep in mind, these are LTE cellphone-powered internet stations. So we might run into the same issues that everyone else has with cellphone bandwidth. This is not a, it's not necessarily a city issue, but one that really needs to be addressed from, from the larger companies, like we had talked about previously. As far as the digital wayfinding, I have been updating as many maps as I can, Waze, Google Maps is, and Apple Maps are the two biggest. And I've been adding in the public parking elements, so that when you are looking up public parking in the Harbor District, you will find them now. You will be able to get directions right there from your phone as you're traveling. So I'm working hard on that. I've taken ownership for the city of all of the business listings, and I have been able to verify each lot. So we are verified by Google and Apple to make changes when we need to. There are also links to parking pages for Harbor District parking with all of the different ways you can pay, like calling. There will be information on the signage. I went to each lot and took sign pictures, and that includes the phone numbers. Those will be, also be added to Google here shortly, as well as Apple Maps where they're applicable. And so we, we're definitely trying to expand the ways that, that people can pay. So I don't want the misnomer that you only have to pay by the app to be the, the only way that you have to park or have to pay to park. We have to really push out to the community that we have a multiple varieties of ways to pay for city parking. We're trying to make it accessible and easy and have everyone use those lots to their full capacity.
Mayor, if I might.
Hey, Matt.
The problem, excuse me, the problem is, all of these are dependent on a cellphone. I know Cox Cable has cable there. All those businesses are hooked up to it. Can't be that hard to run the cable down and hook it to however many machines we have there. And then we have something that's going to work even when the cellphone won't perform.
Yeah, and we could, we can definitely have a Cox service. We would have to put a, put a, some type of structure there or for a little tiny facility, you know, something that we can house the, the modems and things like that, to have our own internet. But that would require a different direction for kiosks, because they're, these are solar-powered. They're meant to be placed in various locations without internet. And so we'd have to expand the search and to try to find something. This is the most widely used. It's called the Flowbird Parking System, and this is the most widely used one in the U.S. And so I can continue my search in looking for something that would be a hardwired connection.
That's probably the direction we need to go, because the cellphones aren't going to work until something changes.
Yeah.
All of the things we do are going to be a waste of time.
Yeah, we're still a couple of years away from 5G here in Destin right at the moment. So Matt, if you'll continue along those lines and give us another option, that'd be great. And we'll talk about it next meeting.
Okay.
Hey, Matt, just so you know, this is Councilwoman Abir. I just put in Waze Parking, Destin Harbor, and it took me to the Marler parking lot. I had to turn off my phone real fast, because it was trying to take me there now. So thank you for getting those online right away. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Webb.
Okay. And for our last slide, all these things, these type of improvements, they do take out, you know, it does take, they incur cost. And so one thing that Ms. Crystal Strickland, our finance director, would like to talk about is a potential of a special revenue fund.
Mayor, if I might just point out, the alternative is just don't charge at that parking lot. Might be our cheapest at the rate of revenues we're, we're raising there. That might be our cheapest way to get people to use it. The only other question I wanted to ask is, are we still using any kind of commercial use? I know for a while, we, business could pay $1,000 and they could have an employee's parking there. Are we doing that at all anymore?
When we went to the new rate, we did, council voted to not continue with that. The staff time required to manage that was proven to be quite immense, and it was simply just not cost-effective.
Yeah, I was just curious if that was in that net revenue? Not, okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Strickland.
Okay, so the last slide of this show, I have here an option. We talk a lot about wanting our parking fees to go towards improving our parking situation within the city of Destin. As, as you heard earlier, we've spent about $4 million just in the Harbor District alone so far in trying to make parking available. And as you saw, we brought in approximately $180,000 last year in parking fees, net of the merchant services fees. So what I'm proposing here is that we could set up a parking special revenue fund. In order to do that, you need two things. First, you need to specify that parking fees collected would be your specific revenue source. And the second thing is council would need to adopt a resolution for the use of those parking fees. So and what we had here as a sample would be specified purposes would be operations, maintenance of current and future parking locations to include signage updates, both electronic and physical, fee collection methods, related collection charges, capital projects to include restriping, repaving, and possible expansion of city-managed parking options. So if you like this idea, you can state so as you close up this item, and we could bring a resolution for you to review at a future meeting.
What I'd like to do at this request is, it would sure make the budgetary process a little easier, but I would entertain a motion to this effect.
I can, I can make that motion, Mr. Mayor. I move to direct staff to bring forth a resolution creating a parking fee special revenue fund with an effective date of October 1st, 2021.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Discussion.
I got a question. What, what, if this passes and we do, which I love the idea of the fund, what restrictions does that put us in a, like, how, I guess, how does the budgetary process work for that fund if we were wanting to use it for something else? Like, five years after collecting all this money? How, how would that work?
It disappears the same way that it comes into existence. So you'd have to pass a resolution to cancel the special revenue fund and the usage.
But, so, okay, I'm sorry, maybe I asked the wrong question. But during the year, if they were, if money was wanting to be pulled out of that, reallocated, there's not a process to move that, those funds? It can only be used for this purpose?
That's why they call it special.
That, that's correct. Yeah, you, you're restricting the usage, so the cash goes into a restricted bank account, and it can only come, come out for these particular usages that you outline.
Now, are there other type of funds that we can create, similar situation, that don't have as tight as restrictions on them?
It's easier to account for, I can also just simply account for it in its own separate fund, and we don't have to designate it with a resolution, and I can keep it on an informal basis as well.
I'm just asking, because I just, you know, if we're collecting, you know, a good amount of money for two or three years, and we are using it to fix the parking lots and do good things with it, you know, somebody has an option that we need some money, and there's a lot of money in there that we have no plan for, I just hate to be put in a corner of not being able to use it, but.
It's, you're talking about having flexibility, and it's a good idea. But establish a special fund also is easier to, when you're talking to people that are complaining about paying for paid parking, and you say, well, all the money goes into a fund that's reserved to provide more and better parking at a later date. It's a little more palatable for them. Then they're like, oh, okay, the city of Destin's not trying to get rich off of paid parking. You know, we all hear that one. If they just saw that amount, they wouldn't say that, but they don't, they don't know. So having a special reserve fund where, where it's designated, that, those fees, it's defendable by and large. Go ahead, Mr. Destin.
Just one question. I take it the maintenance and upkeep and those other expenses we talked about would come out of that fund also?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, that would greatly reduce what we had left over, wouldn't it?
Greatly. All right.
And that's what I'm asking, though, because it's approximately $6,600. How much is it per year to do the, the Marler parking lot? What was the example? Is it 6,600 total?
6,600 approximately for the main, physical maintenance, and there's like 1,600, 2,000 for electricity costs.
So we're talking like eight, $8,200 a year to maintain the Marler parking lot? But then we're collecting how much at the Marler?
17,000.
17,000.
Yeah, it's paying for itself, thank God. At three and a half million dollars. So we, there we go. Well, unless we can get people directed that parking lot, that ought to be a lofty goal. So any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Brayden.
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Ms. Abir?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Eyes haven't so moved. We are going to, before we go any farther, we're going to take a five-minute break. Uh, we are going to, before we go any farther, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're actually doing fairly, fairly well. All right.
Don't jinx it.
Yeah, don't jinx it. Under City Management Report, we are Item F. Lance, take it away.
Thank you, sir. Item 4F is a long-awaited City of Destin Utility Undergrounding Project Management Agreement with UCF. And we have Mr. Jeff Cozad here to present this item and a guest of Mr. Mark Porter here to address the council after that. So Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Wanted to let you know over the last several months, uh, city staff, city legal council and Councilman Destin have had a chance to come together several times and meet, had lots of emails back and forth. And we now have a management agreement that we are satisfied with, all parties, and we'd like to bring that forth for your consideration tonight. The management agreement with Utility Consultants of Florida will allow the city to issue work assignments, then identify specific tasks, timelines, and not to exceed amounts. A draft work assignment was attached to the agenda item to illustrate an example of potential first-year activities. Signing this agreement does not result in a financial obligation to the city. Financial obligation would be a result of an issued work assignment. So any work assignments over 15,000 would come before the city council for their approval before being issued. Mr. Mark Porter from UCF is here this evening. He has a short presentation and will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, Mayor and Council members. Just, just real quick, my name is Mark Porter with Utility Consultants of Florida. I thought it would be good to kind of come here real quick and introduce myself personally. I know there's some new faces to, since the last time we were here. So a little bit about our firm real quick on this next slide. So we really specialize in underground project management. This is what we do for a living. We focus on, we're, we're involved with some of the state's largest undergrounding projects. Some of them that we had brought into our presentation, I promised I'll be quick tonight. I know that presentation was 45 minutes, I'm going to try to keep this one under five minutes, but out of all the projects that we do, Longboat Key, we kind of focused on during the presentation because it's really almost similar to the city of Destin as far as size, scalability. You have about eight miles along the, you know, FDOT corridor, Longboat Key has 10. You have about 300, I think, 50,000 streets, linear foot down streets. We have about 295, so they're very comparable projects. With Longboat Key, that was originally a seven-year project, then it got reduced down to five and then all of a sudden we got hit by Hurricane Michael back years ago. And the, unfortunately, there was some areas that were down for almost up to two weeks. There was one particular development that's close to the golf course that actually was already undergrounded, they were back up that next day. So commissioners came to us and said, there's a new sense of urgency to get this project underground. We were already in the finance stages and had the funding in place through referendum to do assessments on the, on the individual properties. So we went back to the drawing board and we came up with a plan for 3.2 years. We're happy to say now we're about a year and a half in construction, we're right on schedule with that. So as you can imagine, these projects are quite complex, but to be at that stage, we're, we're really excited about that. Some of the other projects, um, you know, some of them are fairly large and some of them are smaller. We'll, we have a picture of one of the projects that's actually heavily involved in the CRA district, it's got a lot of tourism. And then Virgin Trains, the last project, our firm, we provide subject matter expert. That's a, the high-speed train going from Orlando down to Miami. I originally was involved with the utility operations on that, all the way down through there. And then since starting the firm, they've hired us to come in and kind of still help with some of the coordination efforts with the utility companies. As you can imagine, going from Orlando to Miami, just the corridor from West Palm Beach to Miami was over 237 cross and so just about all of them had to be undergrounded or certain sort, especially with the station. So pretty complex project. So that's just a little bit about our firm. We didn't want to go into the detail, I know we shared a lot of that at the October 6th. The next slide, please. So the projects, the commonality between the projects that were undergrounded all come down to three main things. One is safety. So as you can imagine, the storms, even sometimes an afternoon thunderstorm can do some damage, there's outages. The biggest thing that we find out with these that's the most critical is your safety features of being able to get ingress and egress in and out of the island. I mean, that's really, at the end of the day, the most important thing is to be able to get the resources in place. So a lot of times these poles have fallen, trees have fallen and, you know, as you guys know, that could be a big, big issue for these projects. On the next slide, the reliability, the resiliency. So basically, anytime we're doing these projects, as you know, a lot of the branches can be the biggest trigger to a lot of these lines going out. So we've had where, we've had treats, so it could just be, we have these normal afternoon thunderstorms and sometimes those branches can go down and put them out. So there's significance of undergrounding these projects just for those reasons alone to be able to keep that power in service during these storms. On the next slide, aesthetics, that's really the big thing, I think, for a large part of these projects. I, I can tell you the ones that we've completed, it's, it's a day and night. I, you know, there, there are some of the islands that we've worked on where they've just done maybe sections within their CRA district and others that have maybe done a couple of miles in the corridor. As soon as that gets underground, everybody's in line with doing the next section. It really does make a significant impact. And with that being said, on the next slide, this is our, this is our Bradenton Beach project. It's in a heavily tourism CRA district. You can see there, there's a couple of restaurants and hotels. Some of the upper decks are visually looking directly at those lines and a lot of photographs. It's a really popular, it's City of Bradenton Beach, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's, you know, a lot of pictures get posted. So the next slide is a quick video, if you just click on that bottom left. We shared this in the last presentation. I didn't put the sound together on that, but this is just kind of walking through the undergrounding right at the time. So we already had all the in-ground infrastructure in place, all the communication carriers were ready to go and this is just a real quick video that we put together of the actual poles coming down through this district. You'll see in a second what a big difference it'll make. So that was probably around 10 or 11 o'clock and this is about 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, just before sunrise, but I mean, the impact on that is significant. You know, it just really kind of shows you those lines have such a significant impact to, to an area. It really does. So, so this particular project, we started with their, their CRA district, now we're doing Gulf Drive for them, major, major section of highway, and then now they're trying to get the funding to do another section within the CRA. So this one really kind of was the catalyst into those other projects advancing. And then on the next slide, what we tried to do here was just take a couple of snapshots of the, the, basically the, the far west end or the east end of the project going west. And just took, you can see kind of the visual there where we just photoshopped to get the power lines to go away, just to kind of give you a general idea, just kind of put like a time lapse. And then this is, this one here, I think the next one's the biggest impact right there. You could just see, so if we had more time, we could have put a little bit more together, but we thought it would kind of be nice to kind of share what that vision might look. Yeah, yeah. So I wanted to keep it very brief and short. I know you guys have a long evening ahead of you, so we just wanted to kind of let you know, you know, this, these are some of the projects that we've done in the state. We're very excited about this opportunity and, and we really feel like you're in really good hands. We're here and committed to the city, so just wanted to personally come in and see if you guys have, if there's anything I can help answer questions on.
Got a couple people, go ahead, Ms. Abear, I got you next, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. That's fantastic. So you're the guy that's going to do from where Destin Bridge starts all the way to airport, that's our first project. You're the guy, your team is the one that's going to work that.
Yes, ma'am.
And so right now, the project timeline that you have for that is how many years?
So what I'll have to start with is getting the funding in place, right? What is the funding source for the project? As soon as we figure that out, our initial scope, the contract is, I think, at the, the timeframe on that is about seven years with some renew options. It's very similar to the one that we're doing at Longboat Key. And then every year at Longboat Key, they do the same thing, they issue a work assignment based on what the projected scope is for that year. Some of the islands that we work on, they break it up like that in phases and Longboat Key just wound up being a, you know, town-wide undergrounding project, they did the referendum. So once we understand the funding source and how we'll do that, what we're going to initially do is you have to really kind of come up with what the cost is going to be for the project. So that's our first task right out the gate is to put together what they typically call an opinion of probable cause, so you know exactly what that number should look like.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, thank you for being here. Couple questions. One, I know we have not only the utility aspect of it, but I think we are also excited about having a project manager working with the FDOT along on the same timeline because of the reconstruction, reconfiguring that they're doing. Is that something that's along y'all's purview that y'all have done with other projects, working with them as well in a large scale like this?
Yeah, they're.
I say large, but.
No, that's a good point. I know Lance had mentioned something to us back earlier in the year on that, but every project we are involved with, it's just normal par for the course. You know, we deal with the counties and the state, but you know, FDOT involvement, you're going to have permitting and things like that. What we always do on these projects is let them know in advance, here's the plan, what's coming, so that we can, we want to hit the ground running. When you do say we're ready to go with this phase, we really kind of, our focus is let's get it done as soon as we can because we know once it gets started, everybody wants it done. So it's real important for us, that's a real big thing. Just to give you a little bit of background, we've done, I've done a lot of FDOT projects, our staff's done a lot of FDOT projects, so we're very familiar with the FDOT requirements, processes, standard indexes, everything from streetlight poles, clear zones, sidewalk ADA, so we're very familiar with that. So we're looking forward to the coordination efforts with them.
Thank you. And then the other thing is in regards to the contract, from the way I understand it, our pre-meeting discussions that we spent time on discussing and things like that, is it's a task order contract, you submit a task, if it's over 15,000s coming up to us and things like that, I'm, I'm sure that's the normal for how you do these projects, but does that ever cause delays or major issues because of the red tape process of you need to be able to facilitate a pretty quick decision in, in this management style, but now we have to come to city council two to four weeks, you know, away to give you all the, the green light, or is that an issue in this type of work?
We, you know, every municipality that we work for or client, they're all different. You know, we're about transparency, so whatever we, you know, we want you to be excited about the project and let you know where we're at in the stages, just because the more you know, you know, you're going to have constituents that are constantly going to be asking you questions. We like to be very open about what we're doing and how we're doing it. We're here to work on your timeline, so whatever that.
I just want to make sure that, that there's no like future problems that you see like with, you're managing our project and, and it wasn't on that task order, but FDOT is trying to get a hold of you to do something, but all of a sudden it's not one of the tasks that were assigned and then you got to submit a new task order and come over here to get it approved and then FDOT is down the, they've already moved on to the next city or something. I just don't want a delay or a problem. I just want to be helpful.
We, we fully understand that. I think Lance had asked the question, we don't charge extra for that because it's our everyday scope. And, and just to add to that, every single project that we're involved with that we share with you, we've had zero would come back and ask for more money. In fact, I'd say probably about 90% of them are actually a little bit under the budget, so, you know, task orders just to, you know, what we think we need for the project, but we just, we're not about change orders.
Questions? Else? You got off lucky tonight.
All right, good. I wanted, I've wanted y'all to get out before 10, it sounds like it's going to be a long night, so.
It was, it's good to see you again.
We're excited.
And I guess we'll be seeing a lot of you here in, in the future.
We're very excited, so.
Okay, we are too.
We're excited, thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if I'm first going to do the motion.
I was just going to add, and Crystal can help me, we've got $227,154 already budgeted, is that correct? I'm looking at task assignment.
Contract.
No, the, so this contract, we're just approving the contract tonight, we're, we're not giving a task order, so there's no budgetary obligation, but I did budget two, up to $250,000 towards getting the project started for this fiscal year.
And so you've already budgeted that, already done, right?
That's correct.
And that's, that's the point I wanted to make because the rest of it is going to be driven by our revenue source. And until we get that revenue source pinned down, then we don't want to spend more than what we have. And, and this plan does not anticipate doing that. That's why they're going to work on task orders or purchase orders, they're not going to go forward past this point until we have our revenue source secured, so.
That's what we're waiting for you to do.
We're working on it.
Come on, Mr. Destin.
We're going to have to turn the heat up a little bit. And so on that note, I can support going forward because this money's already budgeted, this is going to get us started off, and by the time we get through this, one way or the other, we will know what our revenue source is. Kevin was trying to make the motion, I'll second.
Sure, I move the city manager to execute the agreement for Destin Utility Undergrounding Project Management with Utility Consultants of Florida.
I have a motion, I have a second. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll start with you, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Abear?
Yes.
Ms. Overdare?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
And Mr. Braden?
Yes.
So moved. Sir?
Thank you, sir. Item 4G is options and estimates to address speed concerns at the Cybert Avenue and Forest, Forest Street intersection, and Mr. Zunguzi and his crew have brought back the options for you.
Council members, if you recall, the last, at the last meeting, Councilmember Braden was not available and you're deferred, making a decision until he was available to weigh in on the subject. And so we brought back the, the subject along with a much firmer sense of what the options are and the costs. And our city engineer will just walk you through what analysis he performed and the recommendations he's making.
Mayor, Council, thank you. We did include the presentation from last time for Councilman Braden, in case you didn't get to see it. So all of the slides except the last one are exactly the same. I will be happy to answer any questions you have on those. But if you would, James, if you'll move forward to the last slide. Oh, what, sorry, one before that. So these are the options and estimates that we came up with for this intersection. So we had, we have, we did work on a scope and estimates and we came up actually with some minimum recommendations and alternatives. Just, I know the numbers may look a little bit high, but right now we did include continuing services, design, construction cost, and construction inspection based on resource needs, so that dollar could go down based on how we execute those. But at a minimum, we are recommending that we restripe or refresh all of the pavement markings at the intersection in signs. We add a crosswalk to the south of the intersection. We install warning signs and pavement markings approaching the intersection and we clear all site obstructions within a right of way. So at a minimum, that's the $12,500 that we would recommend that we do. Now, in addition to that, there are some other alternatives that we have developed based on our last presentation. based on our last presentation, such as channelizing the medians on Cybert Avenue, that could be as much as $79,000. Adding traffic calming measures by reducing the size of the intersection, decreasing the radii, and providing visual impact markings and signs, that could be as high as $125,000. A raised intersection with visual impact markings, again, that would be in the range of $125,000. Estimates for speed humps and an always stop are included for the purpose of cost comparison, but are not recommended for implementation at this time. A preliminary evaluation of the data does not support these measures. Staff would recommend additional evaluation be completed before speed humps and/or a always stop is considered. However, council may direct staff to proceed with any or all of these measures outlined in the report. The speed humps could be as much as $32,000. The always stop, somewhere around $42,000, depending on how that goes. Now, evaluation of those type of things. But again, I want to, regardless of how we proceed, we want to, we do recommend that we refresh all the pavement markings and signage. We add the crosswalk to the south side of the intersection, install warning signs and pavement markings as we approach the intersection, and clear the obstructions. Again, that's the $12,500. So, in conclusion, if you have any questions in regard to that, I would be glad to answer those or do my best.
Well, what we'll do is, I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll start the discussion, and we can ask questions during that discussion. You got a motion, sir?
I can make that motion. I move the city council to direct city manager to implement the minimum recommendations at the Cybert Avenue and Forest Street intersection, and to make any required budget amendments.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Go ahead, Mr. King, I saw you were ready to talk.
Yeah, I just had a, had a quick question, Mr. Don. The, the, the speed humps that you're referring to, and I think it was item four, in, in the visual impact example, that picture, is that what you're referring to, is the speed humps?
Well, I have both. So I have just our normal, the cheaper version would just be our normal speed humps, like we have on Beach Drive, and then the more expensive item would be the actual raised intersection, which is essentially a large speed hump.
In your experience, in looking at other communities, are the raised intersections more effective and preferred? I know aesthetically, they look a lot better.
I don't have any data to back this up, but my observation would be that the speed hump is prior to the intersection, not at the intersection. So if you're just thinking about safety of the intersection, the closer the improvement is to the intersection, the more likely it is to slow that vehicle down in the intersection. Yes, sir. I, I think I can say that with confidence.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Mr. Destin.
You say, at this time, your analysis does not lead you to recommend the always stop. Tell me what analysis you've done.
So we do have the vehicles per day on Cybert, which is over 3,000, and then we did go out, we've got a new tool we're using for speed studies that will also give us a count. So the vehicle count on Forest is about 800, so it's about twenty-five percent of the mainline volume. So typically speaking, you like to see more of a equal split of traffic, otherwise, you know, when you stop, there's never anyone there. And that's especially true, you know, during the off-peak season. So, you know, Kelly, as an example, although the, the volumes were a little different, the turning movements were very high, so you had a lot of people turning onto Kelly or off of Kelly. So this one wouldn't necessarily be a good fit, I wouldn't rule it out, but just a preliminary says the volumes aren't very equal and it could lead to issues.
Mike, Mike, Mike. Forest was forty-five percent, I take it, the other part was fifty-five?
No, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. I was about to say, that's a difference, but not a big one.
Sorry, you would be correct. So eight, thirty-two hundred to eight hundred, so about, about twenty-five.
Now, tell me about the volume versus what was over on Main Street and Kelly. How much, what's the volume on Main Street?
So I don't remember it off the top of my head. The, what stuck out in my mind, though, is there was a difference. It wasn't, it wasn't twenty-five to seventy-five, I do know that. But then the turning movements at that intersection is what really made it an easier decision as far as volumes, because there was a lot of people that, the, the major movement on Main was almost Main to Kelly, although there was a lot that went through. So the turning movements kind of can help you make that decision versus just where you have twenty-five to seventy-five percent mainline side street volume.
Okay, so, I guess the point that I would be making is if, if we're trying to slow the traffic down on Cybert, I can't think of a more efficient way to do it than with an always stop. And judging by the neighbors around there that I've spoken to over the last couple of weeks, they're very concerned with the speed, I'm not sure the speed bumps or the raised intersection would accomplish that to the tune that a, that a four-way or always stop would. I understand the discrepancy in the traffics, but the one we want to slow down is the seventy-five percent, and that definitely slows them down when they have to stop. So, you know, my inclination is to, to go with the always stop in addition to the fact that it looks like it's about half the price of some of those other more elaborate addresses.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that intersection, I mean, I've lived here all my life, and that intersection really makes me nervous when I cross Cybert, because, I mean, people are flying down through there, and you really got to look three or four times to make sure before you go across to it. And I know, we didn't have a three-way or an always stop at Main Street and Kelly, and sadly, a young man had to lose his life before we put one there. If it warranted a stop sign, then why wasn't one there to start with? So is that what we're, we're waiting on here, for some man, woman, child, family to lose their life in this intersection before we say, okay, well, maybe it does warrant one? I mean, it's like, like we've said, you know, on that, on Main Street and Kelly, I don't care what it warrants or what, what does your survey or whatever, what it, what it calls for, we want an always stop there. And all the residents around there, like Mr. Destin said, I know a lot of them that live right there, and then they've approached me a couple of years ago trying to get something done at an intersection, saying there was many accidents at that intersection. So I, I mean, I would be more in favor to make an always stop there, but it just seems like we would need to put more signage or, or put paint stop ahead in the road or something, because that intersection would be more dangerous, I would think, than Main Street and Kelly, because people were running that one, not seeing that stop sign. But I would really highly recommend or make a secondary motion or amend the motion, whatever.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you. Would you like to amend the motion, then we'll go back to Skip? Would you like to amend the motion to be a four-way stop?
I would like to amend the motion to make an always stop.
Okay, Skip, he wants a friendly amendment? The, the maker of the motions agree with that? How about the second?
My second.
Okay, so now we have a different motion on, an amended motion on the floor, and Mr. King, I think you're up next.
Yeah, I just was, what it reminds me of is the, that stop, that three-way stop on Mountain and Sea Oats. If you're familiar with that, I've driven down that street thousands of times, and I can count on one hand how many times I've seen somebody coming off of Sea Oats, and I think just as far as a matter of safety goes, if it's a matter of safety, we've made some decisions based on, not, not necessarily based on the statistics or the, the data, I hate to say that, Mr. Don. We appreciate all your hard work, but I'm, I'm in favor of the four-way stop.
Any other further comments? We got a motion, we have a second on the floor. Seeing none, we'll start with those.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject real quick?
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to remind the council, and I'm, I'm absolutely for this, the, the project, no matter what the amount is at the current moment, is not budgeted, is not funded. So we will also have to figure out where the funds are going to come from, and I don't know if Crystal wants to talk about that real quick, just-
Well, can it be pursuant to our budgetary process? I mean, this intersection's been like that for fifty years. So, I mean, we are entering our budgetary process next month, correct? That's right. So, unless it's a pleasure of the council to get this done in the next three or four months, I mean, we could just go through the budgetary process and put it as one of the projects to accomplish. I, I don't have an issue either way, but instead of having Crystal have to start jumping through a bunch of hoops, I guess we need to have that discussion after we pass this or defeat this present motion before we talk about funding. Is that okay, Lance, or you okay with that? Your warning is, well, he did. We, we can't forget about that part of it, but right now, we're just talking about which way we want to go with the intersection, all right? So I think what we'll do is we'll vote on this motion as it stands, and then we can have that discussion right after that. Does that sound good to everyone? All right. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Abear?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
And Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
I have it so moved. So, we do have the issue of timelines, and I'll just open the discuss, or should we, I'll entertain a motion of whether we try to find funding for, to do the project immediately, or a motion to make it part of our budgetary process for one of our projects that needs to be done in the, in this fiscal year. Mr. Brayden?
I'm just curious how two more stop signs and some striping costs $42,000.
I think they're the flashing, I think it's saying they're the flashing, what the one at Kelly run us?
You remember that, how much that one cost on, the Kelly three-way?
There, the signs were about $4,000 apiece, is that right, Mike?
I think they were a little less than that. But, but again, you got the, the sign, and the thermoplastic, and doing a few other things, but I don't, I wouldn't imagine it would be much more than, definitely, less than twenty, I think. Right around or less than twenty. That's just a ballpark figure.
And when we run into these type of issues, like the three-way at Kelly, where did that money come from? Just remind me, did we just spit that out of discretionary funds or rainy day fund, or how did we pay for that one?
We did an internal budget transfer from some other areas that we didn't think we were going to use all of the current year budgeting, but there's less of that now than there was three months ago.
So, Crystal, you did the, now you see me, now you don't. Okay, Ricky Bobby, I got it. So let's do, so I would like to entertain a motion, then, that, that we put this particular project-
Can we, can we hear what she was going to say about the potential budget on this? Did you have, did you have an idea before we do a motion?
No, actually, I, I wanted to know the mag, order of magnitude first, if it was going to be like an under $15,000 or an over $100,000 first. It looks like it's going to be maybe under $20,000. So now I need to pinpoint it down with, between our public works and our engineering group to see if we can get closer to an actual, see how much of the materials we already have on hand, and then we can decide from there if we can do an internal transfer or if it better wait until-
Okay, we're not going to do a motion, then, on my recommendation, we're going to let them do that, and then bring that cost estimate back to us at the next meeting under the city manager's report, and we can make that decision at that time. Is it, you all okay with doing that?
Why do, why do we need lighted stop signs there?
We don't, so the, necessarily, that number was just worst-case scenario, so I didn't want to come and tell you it was $7,000 and it'd be twenty-one.
Right. Yeah, and then you beat him up over it.
I was just wondering why we, why we're going with lighted, if we were trying to put, you know, change everything to lighted stop signs, or why we were putting lighted there, so it just seemed like it'd be fairly inexpensive to put two more stop signs and stripe the road.
Let's just let them-
If they can bring us back some recommendations on that, and, and maybe the, where the money might come from next meeting, it'd be great.
I think that's where it would go. Is that good? You all good with that? Instead of trying to do a motion and get that direction?
Mr. Mayor, it's my, I found the invoice for those three flashing signs, and just an update on that, if I may. The one from on Main, as you approached the Kelly intersection by the AOC, is still a traditional stop sign. We ordered that third sign, UPS lost it. We ordered another one, and it didn't work. So we're having a third one. You know, the third time's the charm, hopefully this one will work and we'll get that installed as soon as we get it. But delivery and everything, I think they're about $1,500 apiece, plus or minus, and that's exactly the same unit, but at the same time, remembering that they're solar-powered, so if there are a lot of trees in the area, they may not function as well.
Well, we don't, we're actually talking about not even needing them. So just go ahead and give us some options, put together a budget, we'll do it, the city's manager will report for our next meeting. Is everybody good with that consensus?
Yeah, I'd just point out, Mayor, on a new intersection with new stop signs like that, those lighted stop signs can save lives, and for another $1,200, I'd, I'd be in favor of that. The other question I had is for Crystal. Crystal, I've not looked at a city budget here in a long time, but we always had in the past, council contingencies, we had funds that, undesignated funds is what I would call them. Can you bring us those amounts, so we'll know what we're dealing with?
Yes, sir. Those amounts have been spent on other projects this year, but I can bring you what they, what the contingency amounts were and the contracts that they ended up being applied against so far this year. I'll be happy to do that.
Sounds good.
All right, there you go, guys. We got that settled, let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 4H is an update on our compass system, otherwise known as the Intergov update, and we have Matthew on the line to lead this off. Matthew?
The compass program, we are working diligently at getting this done. This is quite the project. At every turn, we, we seem to hit a little snaggle, but we are currently working with the Tyler Conversion Team to work on the data that was in our legacy systems. And basically, the help that we have not received from CitizenServe, which is our current code enforcement and permitting system for livery, beach vendor, short-term and long-term rentals, they have provided absolutely no additional help in trying to map out the data. So that has been quite an issue, and I've been working round the clock with the conversion team to try to get that data mapped properly so that the information can be brought over. It is about almost six years' worth of data that is coming out of that system, and so we are trying to get our passes in. We have yet to receive our first pass, which means that I have not been able to review data with staff to make sure that it's coming over correctly. So that is in the process of happening. Unfortunately, this may alter our go-live date again. I hate to bring that news to you, but this has just been one process that is imperative to this, this project. As we continue, all the staff members, I'm, I'm happy to report that code is 100% complete with their portion of the configuration, testing, and training. We are in the process of meeting with community members to go ahead and do some customer service site portal testing, so they can give us some feedback on the system, and if we need to tweak anything, we can. So that, that's going to be scheduled for later on this week, actually. And so we've got people earmarked to come in at specific times during the day. We're going to social distance in the chambers here and give them access to a system to go ahead and try a fake permit, if you will. We're hoping to get this far with the community development department. I know they have some more things that they need to focus on in terms of fees and some other smaller portions of the configuration and implementation process, but we will be able to move forward- able to move forward and do the same training with them, hopefully, complete ours by the end of this week, so we can get that started. And then, the conversion process will take place. We also are going to be working after the, after the go-live, which this is not impacting our, our go-live date, but I will be able to put in all of the scanned items that we've got back from the scanning company, that will also go into the Intergov system, and it'll be converted by the conversion staff, so that'll be searchable online as well. And that's where we sit right now with the compass project. I will tell you, in the 24 years that I have been doing IT, this project is one of the toughest that I've had to, and everyone has been working very hard, especially doing their day job at the city, as well as configuring Intergov. And I know it's been a long time coming. I just ask for your patience as we get this right, set us up for many years to come.
Mayor, I have a question. Matthew, can you repeat who or what is not helping you or giving you support? Can you reiterate that, please?
Yes, Citizen Serve is the program that the city had entered into agreement with years ago, I believe in 2015, to handle code enforcement cases, and also for the permitting process for long-term, short-term rentals, livery, and beach vendors. And they, they are willing to give us our data, obviously, that is our information for the city. However, they will not give us what they call a data map. So, I cannot, if you can imagine thousands and thousands of tables of data, and I don't know exactly where everything goes, so I actually have to physically look at all of that. So, I mean, gigabytes, 50, 60 gigabytes of data of just text and images and things that have to be mapped to the Intergov process. And so, what I'm doing is working with their conversion team to get that done, and when I tell you it's been around the clock, I really haven't had a day off in about three weeks.
And is that for past permits, code, code things, like for the past?
Yes.
Or is that, is that to be able to use it like today?
That, it's, it's to be able to import all of that data into Intergov, so that Intergov is useful in, in going back to looking at properties. So, if you had a property on, you know, Main Street, let's say, and you wanted to find out what the history was on that property, you would need this data to be able to do that, because once Intergov goes live, we're not going to be having access to the CitizenServe portal anymore. So, it is an imperative part of the process.
And I imagine it's not, nothing that anybody else can do to help support you, to put pressure on them to provide you what you need? Is there anything else that can be done?
I have the, probably the best of the best, probably the most thorough people that, sometimes most thorough doesn't make the, the best crew, but I, in this case, I really want to be thorough, only because the, the data is so mixed up, that it's, it's easier to get someone that's very thorough. And so, I'm working with some of the better, best people I've worked with, like I said, in, in all the years I've been, been doing this type of work. So, I feel confident that we can get it done. It's just that it's taking time, and more time than we have.
Didn't we pay for that data?
For the Citizen Serve data?
Did we not pay for that? I mean, they weren't just doing it for free, so we did not pay for that information?
No, we, we actually have access to the data. What they're claiming is that their system is proprietary, and they will not give us the mapping, which actually, a map will basically tell us exactly where the data points. And so, we would be able to take that to Intergov and say, here is where the data goes, and they would just plug it in and, you know, put it in place. However, Citizen Serve is not helping. They have never, they have never helped any city that Tyler has worked with. I've reached out to several, one city actually reached back out through our Tyler project manager, and told us that they fore, had, had foregone the process of converting Citizen Serve, because it was that difficult.
I wonder if that data map would be considered a public record under Florida public record laws?
It is not, unfortunately.
Curses.
The data, it's, the data itself is, and so, we have access to the data, but the map itself is a proprietary mapping system that's on their servers.
Note to self, never use that company again.
Yeah, that's what I had to say. So, after we get our own thing going, we won't need them anymore?
We will not.
Can you put it out there to all your city connections across the nation, that they shouldn't use them?
I, you know what? I, I will definitely put it out there, at least to the Florida Association for Information Systems. I will put it out there, that this is not a recommended company, that's for sure.
Yeah, turn them into the Better Business Bureau, something like that, you know, because that's not fair, what they're doing.
We, we talk about hiring out, outsourcing different people the past few months to do different things, but one thing we haven't talked about is to get this eGov. I mean, like, is this something that we could hire somebody else additionally, Matthew, to do this specific data mapping process with Civic Serve? And, like, is that something that would be a pursuit to come in and do?
My honest answer is no, because we have a conversion team with Tyler, that it would be doing the same exact thing, so it would be duplicating efforts. We can work with the conversion team and get the same results. It's just that it's taking longer to map that data.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Matt?
I think that that would be all for now. And like I said, I appreciate your patience. I know this has been a long time coming. Like I said, I want to get it right for the city. I think this is probably one of the most important projects that we have undertaken here in, in a long time, and I really want this to be the, the flagship of the community development and code departments.
Thank you, sir. Lance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few quick announcements. We have tentatively scheduled for this parking lot outside the City Hall Annex to be resurfaced this weekend, if weather permits. So, that will close off the parking lot to the public. We are putting signage up to redirect patrons of the dog park to use the City Hall parking lot. We can't really direct them up to Morgan's, because they also have a tournament this weekend, because it's spring break, so they're, they'll be wide open. But, patrons can park at City Hall and, and just walk across the crosswalk that we have from City Hall to here. Also, if you want to get out and support the Destin Little League, their opening day is this Saturday, and they'll have their annual parade from the Destin Elementary School over to Dalton Threadgill. So, if you want to support them, I'm sure they would appreciate it. I believe it's 10:00. Lisa, is that right?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM. They should be leaving the Destin Elementary parking lot.
And finally, we had the president sign the American Rescue Plan, and we've got some preliminary numbers that I'm going to let Crystal give to you guys some reasonably good news for Monday.
Okay, as you may have heard, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan this past Friday. We just received the preliminary numbers. Most states, counties, and cities with populations over $50,000 will receive their allocations directly from the federal government. Municipalities such as Destin, which are under $50,000, we will receive our portion indirectly. Preliminary numbers that came out on Friday is that we will receive approximately $5.9 million. These funds are to be used in a less restrictive manner than the CARES Act funds. We will have to spend them by the end of calendar year 2024, and eligible uses include assistance to small businesses, households, and hard-hit industries, economic recovery, and investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So, I've heard multiple times this evening about our broadband issues, and I believe bandwidth relates to both cellular services as well as cable. So, these are things that we can think about. So, we will be bringing this item back to council at future meetings, maybe setting up a workshop, or we can sit down and discuss how we could best invest this $5.9 million into our city to have a long-lasting impact.
Stop signs?
And we got, we got to put all those cables and all that stuff underground, right?
You know, when we're undergrounding, that might be something to think about. Maybe we could throw some fiber underground. That would be a 100-year investment.
There you go, Mr. Destin. Right up your venue there with the undergrounding. You got it. Thank you, sir. Anything else, Lance?
No, thank you, Crystal. That's all I have.
Thank you, Crystal. Well, I'm going to move right on to our public hearing, which means we got to wake up our city attorney from his slumber over there, and take it away, sir.
I'm wide awake with the time change and everything. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2101 LC. An ordinance of the City of Destin, Florida, amending Article 7 zoning and regulatory controls of the Land Development Code, permitting residential uses in the South Harbor Mixed-Use Zoning District and structures predating incorporation of the City of Destin, 1984. Providing for authority, providing for finding of fact, providing for incorporation into the Land Development Code, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Seeing how this is a public hearing, I'm going to open up the public comment portion of this hearing. And is there anyone in the audience that wants to make a comment on this particular ordinance, 21-01 LC? Seeing none, Matthew, do you have anyone?
No, sir.
No, sir. And Ray, was there any communications, texts, or email concerning this public hearing? Seeing no public comment, I am closing the public comment portion of this hearing at this time, and will entertain a motion. Ms. Abear?
I'll make that motion. I move to approve ordinance 21-01-LC on second reading.
Second. I have a motion of second. Is there any comments by any of the council members, or questions or anything? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Abear?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yeah.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
And Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Voice, vote is unanimous, so moved. And now, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda. All right.
Motion to pass consent agenda minus item A, wasn't it?
C. So, I have a motion of the consent agenda for item A, B, and D, and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
Mr. Destin? Ms. Overdeer?
Yes.
Ms. Abear?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous, so moved. Go ahead, Mr. Destin.
It does not have a budget, and I'm confused on how we would enter into a contract without a budget. I saw it said that any amounts that would have to be allocated if they're over 15, but I don't know how you budget for something that doesn't have a cost associated. So, does anybody in the staff can clue me in?
I'd be glad to. The plan is to have the contractor, we would go with him ahead of time and identify the area we wish to have him work, and the work that needs to be done. And at that point, he would produce for us an estimate, or not an estimate, a quote, for that work. And then, we would either bring that to council if it was over 15, or if it wasn't, we would go ahead and advance that internally.
And so, how rapidly do we do this? Is this going to be in a year, five years? I mean, on the, on the undergrounding, we have a $237,000 budget that is set aside to start with. There's no budget here at all. On top, and I had, you know, I really am baffled how you budget something like that.
Well, some of the money is already budgeted for the harbor boardwalk. And, you know, it was in last year's TDC's budget, and I'm sure with the application we put in again this year, we'll have additional monies in there for that. Some of it may be repair work, and that could be, you know, subject to storm damage or whatever, you know, might happen that would result in the repairs that might be needed to be done.
And how much is budgeted from last year?
For the harbor boardwalk, I think we had $30,000.
How much, I'm sorry, 130?
No, 30.
30?
30. But, that number may change for this coming year, and we talked about trying to get some additional funding for that particular project, because that, you know, wasn't, it's not going to do a great deal.
No, $30,000 won't cover much.
No.
The other question, and I didn't see attachment A. I don't know if it was in there, and I couldn't find it, which I guess addresses how the work's going to be done. I know that at the last minute, that boardwalk construction standards were changed, we took out stainless steel screws and put in nails, we did a number of other things, which led us to the position we're in today. What safeguards do we have to make sure that the standards that we build it back to are adequate?
Well, the, the scope of work did identify stainless steel fasteners, and we will be using stainless steel screws, so that is what we called for in the, the scope of work.
That's what we're going to go back with?
Yeah.
And the boards?
Yeah, depending on the location. If it's going to be on the boardwalk, we're going to use the wear board, which we...
The stuff that was there?
Yeah. But, for other locations that might have different decking, what we might use treated, it just depends on the location itself.
And we had two bidders, it looks like?
That's correct.
And did we look at the experience of the bidders? Have they done a lot of this?
They've both worked for the city in the past.
And they, I guess, when these constructions are done over the water, you have to have longshoreman's insurance. It's a special insurance, correct?
That is correct.
And they have that?
For, not for the boardwalk, but there might be other locations they would need that insurance for.
Okay. Well, as I say, to budget and enter into a contract without a budget makes me very reluctant.
I'd like to speak to that for a moment. So, the, the reason they did this procurement, this was just to hire a continuing services contractor, this was more like a request for qualifications than anything else. One of the primary reasons they reached out to do this is we'd like to have them at our fingertips in case another storm hits, so that we will not have a delay in the future when we need to do repairs at places like June White Decker, at the, at the boardwalk, at Joe's Bayou, and other places where we have decking. So, we'll be able to bring such expenses to FEMA to show that we've already done the procurement, and this is, and when we show how rapidly we were able to accomplish the work, then we'll get reimbursed faster. At the moment, we don't have any specific tasks written up for them, so, but when we do have specific tasks, then we will bring forth the, the budget at that time for those tasks.
Well, you know, I'm going to go with you, because I saw there was a 30-day bailout clause in the contract, it looks like?
That, that could be. I, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, well, it was there.
Yes, there's a termination for convenience clause.
Makes me more comfortable, but it appears to me that we're going to go through the budgetary process for these repairs, much the same as we're going to do for these three or four stop signs. We're going to have to go back and pull it out of somewhere else every time, which is an odd way of doing things.
Mr. Destin, I, as a person formerly in charge of those types of repairs, I can tell you that we, we did budget a substantial amount, and I don't know the number exactly, but I can get it for you, in repairs and maintenance within the Parks Division. Also, budgeted repairs and maintenance within the boardwalk itself, that is partially funded by the TDC, and, and then in the recreation account, because there's multiple accounts...
And so, those funds would be used on this contract, is what you're telling me?
We do have money available to use.
Okay, I'll move we approve, then.
I have a motion. Second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Abear?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Mr. Destin? Ms. Rams, Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
And Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Eyes have it so moved. All right, well, that takes us right on to Councilmember Braden. You've got the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I had one of our citizens here in Destin wanting to build a couple homes back over off First, Second, Third Street, back in that area, with the boat, Joe's Bayou Boat Ramp is at. And it's my understanding is that the new flood, the new flood map has went into effect the last couple of weeks, which will put his finished floor level about middle of the neighbor's windows on either side. So, I met, I met with staff out there and the homeowner, and we, we've talked about it. So I met, I met with staff out there and the homeowner, and we've talked about it. So my question is, is can staff look into how the new maps will affect development? Also, can staff look into any changes that can be made to our current flood ordinance that can help that development in these areas as a result of the, the new flood map? Because I know we have three or four of these areas in Destin. And that would be my question for staff.
We'd be happy to do that.
And with, with building, is there any pending ordinance doctrine that we can do to help, help out the building while this is in process?
If you have specific direction on what you generally at least want the ordinance to say, then we can invoke the pending ordinance doctrine.
I have a question along that lines. Isn't that flood map a result of us being able to get flood insurance for the entire community at a, at a cheaper rate? To follow, you have to follow, you have to go by certain guidelines, so the Destin City itself falls within the emergency flood plane. So if we start making ordinances to address this particular issue, is, would that put that in jeopardy?
No, we don't intend to impact those rates negatively at all. It's something that we've been looking at, we just didn't have the, the opportunity to. And I think the issue that the council member raised up here clearly now makes it an urgent issue that we need to take a look at. So we can move ahead with respect to the issue of pending ordinance. Let me look at my, with my staff and figure out specifics as far as what changes we're making, and come back next meeting, and so you can direct Ms. Cobb, ask that question, Ms. Cobb, whether she can recommend that or not.
And, and the reason I'm saying more specifics is that if you gave us general direction, that would basically give staff the power to impose regulations that you all did not approve. So if you give us a little bit more specifics, we can do the pending ordinance doctrine, because we don't wanna create a situation where staff is legislating for you.
As a note, the flood plain maps actually change. So in other words, there's locations where, let's say before, your base flood elevation was eight feet. The new map allows you to be at seven feet. So when we say direction, it's not that we're changing what's there. Once those, we look at what those maps are and the effects they can have in those different communities, we'll actually be at the same level and the same rate for insurance. It won't have any impact, but that could have a significant change to some of those folks who are developing. So the map is what actually is cha, is the catalyst for the change, the changes to the map.
That'd be great if you can bring, bring some recommendations back at the next meeting for that change. I mean, when we met up with staff, when you got, you build a home and the finished floor level is at the center of the windows, at your neighbors on both sides, when you gotta bring in that kind of feel to bring your lot up, then you just flood your neighbors out. And if you run redevelopment in that area, if all them homes are that high, then instead of streets, we're gonna have canals over there. So we've just got two or three places in the city that need to be addressed, so that was all. Thank you so much. And the last question is, the livery vessel applications, how many do we have turned in and how many has been approved?
I believe it was about five turned in, and one, two, two have been approved. Okay, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Ramswell.
Thank you. So I guess just the first thing I have is, I know when I saw the referendum issue that I kinda went, wait, is this what I remember voting on? And I was a little confused, and I had to call Ray for something later that afternoon. And he mentioned to me that his phone had been ringing off the hook with people confused about the referendum and thinking it was something different. So I just wanted to bring that up, because obviously I wasn't the only one that was a little confused. I had thought that what we had voted on that night, I remember changing it, first we talked about majority, that wasn't enough. Then we had gone the unanimous, unanimous, yes, unanimous route, and then we ultimately decided supermajority. So I was clear on that. But I had thought we had voted that by a supermajority, we would send it to a referendum, which is, I guess, I'm in trouble land, I don't know, but apparently other people thought the same thing. So I, I don't know what happened, but clearly there's something going on out in the community. I guess somebody posted something on a website or something and got people stirred up as well. But I just wanted to bring that up, that I don't know if anyone else got any feedback or heard anything, but I'm just giving you my take on it. And I, I actually did the translation for Spanish, so I have no excuse whatsoever, because I translated the thing and I should've caught it then and asked questions, but that's on me. But I did wanna just bring it up, like I said, because there does seem to be some confusion out there as to what our real intent was.
Ms. Cobb.
I don't know if there's confusion among other council members. I haven't heard that from other council members. But I did, I did see some social media that indicated there was some confusion. And so I've heard about it, and I think it probably stems from the right-of-way referendum language, where when that language came about, there was an instance before council where a right-of-way was being traditionally treated in the city like a park. We then passed a code provision and a charter amendment was passed by the public and approved by council where, in order to transfer a right-of-way, you would need a referendum election. And then when we did the subsequent ordinance at the, that, that was in November. Then when we did the subsequent ordinance in March, council initially talked about requiring a referendum for the transfer of any city park. And then I think, if I remember correctly, there was some concern that that would tie the city's hands a bit too much, because we were concerned, not necessarily about selling a park, I don't think there was any interest in that or giving away a park, but more, for example, what if it needed to be security for some debt at some future point, where the council wanted to use it as, you know, security or something like that? So the language was discussed, and then I recall council going from requiring a referendum to talking about potentially a unanimous vote. And then after that, as you indicated, you remember this part, then it ended up being a supermajority. So the park charter amendment is a step further than what you have now. We, we now cannot, as the city, transfer the interest in a park unless the council votes by a supermajority to do so. Prior to that, it was only a majority. So you did take steps in the direction of protecting the parks for the public. Now, if council wants to take it further and require a referendum, we should talk about that at a future meeting and the ramifications for the city. But if you decide to do that, it could be put on a future election as a next step. But we have to think about, you know, parks encompasses a lot of the city. So you'd wanna think about the ramifications of how much you wanna restrict, and if you wanna restrict all of them to a referendum, because that could affect your ability to use city property as security at points in the future, I think was one of the legal concerns.
Thank you for explaining that. I think that's where I got confused, because I was thinking our goal was to try to protect a lot of these right-of-ways and parks and areas, and that the way to protect that would be to let the people decide, because people obviously wanna retain their parks and their right-of-ways and such. So I guess I, I missed something, or I just, whatever happened, but that, I appreciate you explaining that. Because really, all we changed then was require, instead of a four-three, it has to be a five-two, right?
That's, that's correct.
So we went through all that for one vote.
Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I received about a dozen phone calls in that regard during the election, and asked me to explain the referendum. And after I did, they were not really confused, they just don't feel that going from simple majority to supermajority is that much of a change.
Well, it's a big change, and we walked through that whole process and had a very robust debate about a unanimous, and how hard one person, no matter what the issue was, could be a holdout that wouldn't make legislative sense, where it's difficult to get a five-person vote, even if there was a split amongst opinions in the council process. And I think also, we, we decided outside of our height requirement that we went to a referendum, is that deciding important issues in the city through voter referendum is one of the most inefficient and not necessarily the best ways to govern a community, because we see that with some of the stuff that happens in the state constitution. They're legislating through referendum, and then whoever happens to, to have the best mail, mail-out campaign and can mislead voters, you don't really get the full story. This council has to respond to the voters, and, and so they're held to account by the voters. And so that's why we went down that route. A supermajority usually carries the position of the community clearly, and I think that's why we went that route. We walked through each one of those ideas. And on the issue of the height restriction, because it is part of the comp plan, if we were gonna go outside our comp plan, we thought that was, that one could be held by the, a referendum of the people. But on issues of controlling city property and stuff like that, I think our discussion, for those of us that, those of the folks that weren't here, was very clear and robust that, you know, this council needed to have the capability to address all situations. And then the issue of trying to lease, or sell, or use part of a park outside of its intended, it would take a supermajority. And that, in that way, you still have good legislation, you still have flexibility to address unique needs like a fire department or what have you. And, and the fire department thing was a good example. The people spoke, and the council followed suit, and they didn't do the plan. So I, I think our system works, and that's why we run for office, we get elected. We're, we're supposed to legislate based on the best information that the staff and the community gives us. So I think that's how that all played out. The confusion, I think, that Dr. Ramswell, was the fact that we had a referendum in November on height restrictions, and then in March, we had this vote, which was a, it was a voter decision approval, but it wasn't put in referendum powers in the hands of the voters. So they had two different ones.
Yeah, and I guess that's the confusion, because I thought that's how this whole thing started, was taking it back to the people.
And again, it's in the discretion of the council. You can discuss it now, then, if that's something that you want to put on a future agenda and have staff bring back.
I remember the conversation was that after we talked about the building height going to a vote by the people, being on a voting ballot, then this discussion about parks and right-of-ways, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Braden, but I think he even said, the citizens put us in, in power to, to represent them. You know, if we keep putting everything onto a ballot, you know, what, what's the purpose? I mean, am I right, if I remember correctly, it was you that said that, and it made great sense that we're supposed to represent the people, we're supposed to do what they want us to do. And if we keep saying, well, let's put on a ballot, let's referendum this, something, then it's like, well, what's, what's the purpose of the council? If we keep saying, let's make the people vote?
It's not, it's not efficient form of good governance. It's usually not good governance, and it's $10,000 every time you do one. And that's a $10,000 vote on an item that this council, I think, is more than capable of making.
Was that the final price, the actual invoice price? And then there was an estimate. Was that the actual price?
I would have to defer to the city manager on the price.
I don't believe, we probably have not received an invoice yet. He was gonna invoice us after all services were performed. I think we had the final canvassing board meet today, so.
But there's other suggestions. If you all are not satisfied with where the park has been put as of now, we can, even if we don't wait for another election, we could do an LDC or a code ordinance that provides additional protections for parks. And then if that ordinance was ever to be, attempted to be revised, it would take two public hearings, so you would certainly be giving the public a say. And you could do that in the meantime, if you're interested in it. I also have the other ordinance you directed with respect to the Zerby Calhoun area. And in that ordinance, which is going to LPA this Thursday, we have basically enacted the same regulations that we did in the historic harbor overlay in the Zerby Calhoun area, but then we added specific provisions to address what was suggested at the harbor board meeting and directed by council with respect to the specific parks, cemeteries, museum, I'm sorry, and, yeah, the post office is part of the museum, and the community center in that area. So those are given specific protections as well. But, I mean, if you wanted a general protection for parks, we can put things into the code as, not just the, you know, it doesn't have to just be the charter.
Mayor, I would observe, though confused or not, the issue was supported by 89% of the voters. That pretty much tells the story. And as far as going to more votes on more issues, as you said, Mayor, that's not Republican, that's more akin to mob rule we, we've been elected to represent.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear where they stand, so I don't think we're gonna have any issues if, if we get presented with an option or, we have a need. I'm, I'm pretty sure, I have confidence all of y'all that you'll take all that into account. All right?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, just because I was confused, and obviously people were too, but, yep. All right. So the next thing I have on here are work plans. And this was brought to me by a former city council member who actually was part of a panel that briefed each of the different committees and let them know sort of what was going on. I believe Mr. Bailey was on that committee as well, if I'm not mistaken. But they did sort of a briefing, or maybe it was Ms. Cobb, I'm sorry, I can't recall whom. But the point is, when they get their training to be on a committee, they talk about work plans, which, to me, it's a strategic plan, but then as part of the strategic pan, it's your annual work plan. So the idea being there's consistency, and every year, they're not just sort of throwing things together for a presentation, but that there's, you know, in year four, we're looking at this, year three, year two, year one, and you're building towards something. And as new members come on, this work plan, strategic plan is already in place, and it's, it's something easy to follow and build on. Am I correct, Mr. Bailey, that you were part of that group that did that training or that?
No, I don't remember that, ma'am.
Okay.
All I know is that...
Maybe, oh, it was Mr. Johnson. Ah, okay.
Yeah, that's correct. Wendy Chabot and I, and Ms. Trammell, helped, helped lead the, the committees towards completing these plans, so that they would have something in writing, some goals to attain. And I, I appreciate you bringing it up, because I think we really need to get back to that and, and provide that training for them again.
Great. And that was, that was why I had it on here, is because it was suggested that it's missing now, and it's something that would be beneficial. So I wanted to see if that was something that we could resume, just to give them more tools and, you know, more consistency throughout the system, the committee system. Perfect. Do you need a direction or motion, or?
No, we'll move that forward.
And then my other item was already brought up, so I'm done. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Ramswell. Mr. Destin. Mike, Mike, Mike.
We need to just leave this thing on, don't we? Two quick, two quick issues. Three or four meetings ago, we asked for staff to bring back to us preliminary report on the Stallman Intersection Improvements that we were anticipating, or DOT, or whoever it is that's anticipating them. I, I guess it was on a preliminary agenda, but fell off this time. And I wanna make a motion that it be presented at the next agenda meeting.
I'll second that.
I got a motion, I'll second. Any discussion on it? Mr. Braden.
Sure.
Dr. Ramswell.
Yes.
Mr. Destin.
Yes.
Mr. Overdear.
Yes.
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 You guys are all ahead of me. Eyes have it, so moved.
Okay, second one is somewhat related. The cross-down connector redesign, I saw some paperwork that, that the company that's doing that for us is predicting that's a year or two it's gonna take them to do that. That's really not acceptable, in my opinion. So I'd like to see us put that back on in the first meeting in May, so we can straighten that question out. And also, I've been approached by several members of the community who've had some really good ideas about multimodal paths that may be able to be worked into that through the park area and through the azalea, which is a nice wide right-of-way. And I, and I thought we should kick those ideas around, because they have a lot of merit. We can do like they do at Sandestine or like they do on 30A and actually have those multimodal paths where people bike, or where they use their golf cart, and actually do something that is mulby, moti, yeah. that is mulby, moti, yeah. Multimodal, I can't always say that. It actually is multimodal in nature. So I'd like to see us do that at the meeting in May and, and let them tell us why it would take up to two years to go forward with this design. And do I need to make a motion on that or can we put it on that meeting? Good enough, I'm done, Mayor.
Mr. Overdeer?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Abear, you had something?
Yes, the first one was, I would like to make a motion or some sort of whatever the plan is to, I know that the planning section, if I'm, am I right, Mr. Zenguzi, you've already lost somebody in the planning department? So you're already, you're down a body when you really needed two people. But what I, my goal is, is I know that a lot of the permitting is very delayed, but I think the problem is, is because you have to approve windows and driveways and fences and, and all the storage sheds and just the residential stuff. And I think if we could give you an assistant or delegation to somebody in your department or hire somebody, because that way you could get some of the bigger projects that need you on them taken care of. Am I correct in this?
You, you are reading my mind. I intended, because of the automation that we're going to be doing, I intended to revamp our review and permitting section such that we have a dedicated line for simpler projects that can be expedited. I'm talking about fences and driveways and all those simple projects that currently right now just going to the harbor and are behind bigger projects. So as part of the streamlining process, I, I was, I was thinking of, of coming with a proposal to have that section revamped and yes, dedicate one or two staff members just to do the routine stuff so that we can expedite some things without having people be getting held out.
Do you need, do you need council to give you like authorization to hire a planning person instead of just waiting two more months for this system to get up and running? Because right now is when people need you in the developing business area to help them get projects that keep taking six, nine months because you're overwhelmed with the small projects. So because we keep training people and we don't pay them enough, they go to another city, how can we help you get a new employee that we can pay the right amount and you train them and we don't lose them? How can we help you?
Didn't I give them those keys already last month?
What happened?
They're, they're hiring them, I think.
No, he just lost, he's down two people.
Yeah, we just lost a planner, relocation, the husband, his life changed and so those things happen in life. So, but to answer your question, the answer is, is yes. I was going to ask that anyway. So it would be good to have a head start and start training, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to make it happen, they hire a planning person with the funds that we've already preset and said, get someone hired and give city manager like authorization to get the planning department up and running with two extra bodies ASAP.
I have motion.
Staff member that you can assign, but I was picking the brain of our city manager from Gulf Breeze who did our visioning session. And he said, in fact, that's exactly what they do over in Gulf Breeze. They have class one, class two permits and they have a person who does the simpler ones and that's his, his or her job. And they, they get them out. They do that all day long. And that's where we need to go. And because intergov looks like at the rate it's going, we, we need to do something to get these permits out. And I think that's, and we might even go over and consult with him and see exactly how he set that up, so how he tears them out. But that's, that's where we need to go to get the permits out.
I think it's also a common thing in many cities that you have permit techs that handle the simpler permits and then you have planners who handle the more complicated items. And it's also probably helpful to, as a retention issue, because when the lower level permit techs get really well versed in the city codes over time from doing the permits, they can move up and now you have a planner with city experience and you can hire another lower level permit tech at a cheaper rate, you know, a less expensive rate to the city. And, you know, as they're here, they learn, they get more experience, they get promoted. So.
So Louis, you can hire somebody with that motion and Mr. Destin, second?
Let me work with Louis and Crystal to, to make this happen.
Yeah, instead of doing a motion here, why don't you guys do that, Lance? And then come back with a, with, with, with your plan for us to approve.
Mayor, with all due respect, there's a motion on the floor.
I know, I know. Well, is, does it need to be amended?
I think we're amending it to give Lance the authority he needs to work with Louis, but I want to make it very clear, that's the direction we want to go. That's why I feel better with a motion.
Okay, so you accept his amended? Who seconded it?
Nope, seconded Alan.
Oh, so I'm, you amended it, so I'm sure.
I just got a question. I'm just, I'm just confused because the, I mean, I, I thought I gave a pretty clear direction motion to give them exactly what you're saying right now. So what, we're just duplicating what we already did. So is there something that was missing the past month and a half from whenever I was trying to do the same thing? Like what's, what, what tonight is going to make a difference than what we did a month and a half ago to give you that authority or something?
I can explain. What you helped us address was to pay disparities because we were lagging, we were not competitive enough. And so the city manager and I and, and the finance director and the HR director, we, we mentioned, addressed that. What we're talking about right now is the processing of the front office. I don't have that capacity right now. I have planners that are supposed to do good, steady, interesting and, and complicated projects. I'm talking for hiring somebody to do the routine work. And that's the position I'm talking about. And that's what I said, somebody is reading my mind. Yeah. So it's two separate things.
So we're giving you a direction tonight to hire a techs type of person that Ms. Kopp was talking about.
Correct.
Last time, I was trying to give you more money to either.
To be competitive.
Find the planner.
Right, to be competitive.
And be competitive. So I just want to make sure that, again, you're, you got what you need or something.
We're tracking, we're good.
Thank you for explaining.
Okay.
Mr. Braden?
Thank you. My question is for the city manager, if your staff is struggling or shorthanded, why are you not bringing this to us? Why is the council member bringing this forward and asking to get help?
I actually had a discussion with Mr. Zenguzi about this exact thing this week. So we, the discussion was, is he having to approve all of them, all of these permits himself or not? And so, I mean, we're working on it, we're working our way through it and I think this, this will be helpful.
Okay. I just, just want to make sure in the future that, you know, if you need the help or we need more money or whatever, you come to us and say, look, you know, this is what I need to get a job done that you guys want. That's, that's all. Well, thank you, I have no more.
Just want to remind everybody, people are getting paid $700 a week to stay at home. My, my son's wife and our executive chef are waiting tables tomorrow morning. We have zero staff at our breakfast restaurant. So it's, and it's not just like service related industries, it's, it's bad everywhere. So it's just going to be a continuous struggle. We'll try to equip you guys with all the tools necessary, try to make it happen. But I understand it's not as easy as throwing a dollar bill at it and/or providing another position. It's hard just to get people out of bed, take their pajamas off.
Two hundred dollars.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. So Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Ms. Abear?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Eyes have it, so move.
Thank you, Mayor. The second thing, I was going to commend Lisa and her department. I went down there Wednesday last week to look at the reeds and bamboos and she had, what was her name, Lisa from the university?
Sheila Dunning.
Had came in, gave us the reason why we couldn't just rip it all out, which we had discussed at the last meeting, that bamboo just takes over and can't be stopped, basically. She talked about the soil erosion because of the Coleman River going through and all the docks down there and Joe's Bayou side would be washed out if there wasn't anything to stop that. We agreed that if she could cut it shin high, and I said, it'd be awesome if you could get it done so that what, by the time the mayor and Johnny drive by to go to the meeting Monday night, it's clear. And they made it happen. And so Lisa, I'm just, I'm absolutely thrilled how hard your people worked, how diligently they did that and fantastic work on that, okay?
And it was with Public Works too, just so you know.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Appreciate you and your team. And then the last thing I have is a quick question on the helicopter flight pattern. I don't know who it was that wrote back to me and said that the FAA out of this little Destin Airport controls those helicopter tours because the folks over on scenic 98 on Holiday Isle said they're now basically flying over their pools. And we don't know if we've been able to manage that and I don't know if I need to get Patty back in here, she's got a good handle on some of that. Do any of the staff know anything about who's in charge of the helicopters that run the tours?
We're not.
It was Joey that responded to you, if he wants to.
Yes, ma'am. It's, you know, it's airspace and they do have to log their flight pattern through the tower, if I remember correctly. And it's controlled through FAA. We always would forward the complaints to the FAA, Mobile Sheriff's Office, the same thing. But we can try and reengage someone and get that answers for you. I'll definitely make contact tomorrow.
We could always, I'm sorry, we could always, council could pass like a policy or resolution to encourage the proper authorities to encourage the helicopters not to drive over residences as much as possible or things like that. Louis, I think, had some experience that he could speak to in Tampa with a policy like that or south of Tampa?
Yes, we, we tied it up to location, Landers location. In this particular case, we'll have to work with the county because the location where they fly out of is outside the city limits. But we do have that interlocal agreement with the county. So perhaps we could sit down with my counterparts in the, in the county and talk through the issues. What we did in, in South Tampa is we, we worked with the helicopter, helicopter companies part of their approval that they vary the, the flight pattern and stay away from residential areas to, to respect the tranquility of those areas. And so perhaps it's something that we can take a look at. The challenge here for us is that we don't have direct control of the location part. So we're going to have to rely on the goodwill of the county.
Thank you. And Joey, if you could just reply in that email to the individual that lives over there on scene 98, that we will try and work something over the next few weeks, that we'll try and get them re-engaged back to the proper flight pattern?
Yes, ma'am, I'll take care of it.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Mr. King?
Yeah, I just want, just one thing. I had two, this is kind of in relation, sort of, not really in relation to the Forest Street or the Cybert Forest deal, but I had two young, young mothers reach out to me on Pine Street and they alleged that people race on their street. They may just be, they may have been metaphorical and they, people just speed down there. It seems like to me, and I've had probably 50 people reach out to me about different things, very few of which that I've brought to the, I mean, most of the time you can help them out, but this one seems like real, hits close to home just as far as safety goes. And they had asked if there was anything we could do as far as a study or get some, I didn't realize how expensive speed bumps were. But, I mean, there's a, like 10 or 11 children, you know, kids or grandchildren that live on that street and they're really concerned about people speeding down there. And so I don't know if there's anything we can do or if we can look into it. And I told them, I assured them that I would talk to the right people and all the right people are in this room, so. Anyways, any, any ideas or thoughts on that would be awesome.
And Pine runs between Cybert and Calhoun, correct?
Yeah, and it's kind of a, I think that one and Willow, and I think there may be one other one, but like, just being that Calhoun gets so much traffic, Cybert gets so much traffic, I don't know why. I mean, I don't ever drive down those streets, but apparently a lot, apparently a lot of people do. Yeah, that's right. The one time I had to, I was on Cybert and I was thinking I was going somewhere on Cybert and I had to get somewhere on Calhoun and I zipped in there and one of these gals was sitting on the front porch with her two-year-old, she's pregnant, and, and her husband were sitting in the, you know, on the front porch. I'm like, oh, God. So I just, I just text them, I was like, sorry. I wasn't the culprit necessarily, I was part of the problem. But anyways, trying to be part of the solution, so. But.
Thanks for calling yourself up to the call, Mr. Ryan.
No, but anyways, I don't know what we can do or if there's anything we could do, but what do you guys think?
Let's take a look at it.
Just one comment that I would like to make, just to kind of, so we can start thinking in this direction. I, I've done a lot of speed study work lately. I've talked to quite a few folks and I just want to note, they actually name the car or the individual normally. I, I'm getting this a lot. I mean, you're, you're actually, they can tell you who is speeding or what type of vehicle. It's, it's rather unique. So I don't have a solution for this yet and we, we will be working to come up with something. But just so you understand the difficulty, it's not just a data thing, they, they, I've had a couple people, so-and-so's, you know, they, it's kind of unique, but, but we, we will work at it and we will get back with you.
Thank you, sir. If, if you ask them and they tell them it was me, not them, but they'll rely on.
You haven't been implicated yet, but.
Mayor, I might make a suggestion. The policy that we discussed a few meetings back where the people that live on a street petition, the council get speed bumps, that I think would apply to that area. And so if you can get the folks that live on that street to petition, then we actually have a policy in place that, that they can use. And we put speed bumps, our Stallman that goes through that neighborhood, that goes up to where the police station is, they actually used, I believe, that policy to put those speed bumps in there.
Yeah, and that, and that, sorry, they, they said the same thing and they said, look, we'll do whatever it takes, you know, we'll get, we'll put in all the work we need to if we need to and this and that. So I think they're on board. And I don't think that, you know, we talked, I've talked to several people before bringing it here and they, and everybody said, well, we don't want to have, we don't want to speed bump our whole town, you know what I mean? And, but I think this is kind of a little bit more uniquely situated, situation, so thanks. Thanks for that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
What's the status on the Joe's Bayou dock, the boat, boat access?
The parks and I believe some of Mike's crew from Public Works disassembled that pier last week. I, I went by there when, when they were doing, so I think it was, was it Friday? Thank you. All the days blur together. We went ahead and did that for a couple of reasons. Number one, it had to be done anyway. It will save us money in the long run, otherwise the contractor is going to charge us for that. Number two, with spring break here and our knowledge of how it works down there, even if we caution tape it and cone it and everything else, if the boards are still there, then people are going to get on it. And so we, we felt from a safety standpoint that we were better off to remove the decking. So it's removed. As far as the replacement goes, we're looking at an option internally to see if we can do it, if we can pull the permits ourself, because we did go back out to bid for that project and I don't know the exact number, but I can tell you that it was crazy. It was in, in the $92,000 range for a little dock like that. And we, we've asked some people in the field what it should really cost and they were more in the 40-ish, or maybe even less than that thousand. So we're wanting to look at this internal option with using some of Michael's crew who have the experience to do it. And if we can get it permitted, then we're going to do it in-house. If not, we're going to have to go back out to bid again.
Is that a FEMA project potentially for getting refunded?
It was, the. It was, the damage was caused by Michael, so it's, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I didn't do it.
The damage was caused by Sally. So it could be seventy-five percent reimbursable through FEMA. At this point, we just, we need to get it operational, so.
So is there, is there a timeline that you're trying to have one way or the other?
We want to hopefully try to get it open by Memorial Day, because we, we need that for the hundred days of summer.
Do we have any idea off the top of our head what type of revenue those slips pull in per slip, or, I'm just curious, I mean, if we're, if we're sitting and close, eventually it's, it's not making the money, and now we're, another revenue source is going away, but it makes it more of a priority, I think.
And the good news is...
I think it's more about residents, though, isn't it? I mean, there's a lot of residents that use the Joe's Bayou launch. That's not necessarily the twenty-dollar fee for out-of-towners.
All right, so the launch is still usable, they just don't have that dock alongside So as far as money-wise from Joe's Bayou, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but knowing, knowing that business over there, I can tell you that the years that I was overseeing that operation, we would easily bring in sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars.
Lance, you think the reason them bids were so high is just the fact that every marine company in, right now is slammed, and they could just, they could name their price? Because you're not the only, the city's not the only one with sticker shock from docks at the moment.
Well, the only thing I think I might add is, I know this has happened Friday, so maybe this is just a timing thing, but I guess as long as we're making sure that while people are still using the ramp, that we're taking precautionary measures on the torn-up part for people's boats not, you know, from what I was told the other day, there's Nels, they're very, you know, it was just a not-safe operation is what I was told, that was just out there, so I'm not sure, I haven't been out there today, what it looks like, but I imagine it's, while it's, I mean, you just said we could still launch a boat, but are there pilings and stuff in the middle of the water that, that you could bump up to?
Well, sure, the pil, the pilings are still there, because all, all but three are reusable for that dock, and should, should save us some money.
All right, appreciate it. It's almost ten o'clock, yeah. That's it, sir. I'll save it for next time.
All right, you still want to do the Corey Ledbetter?
Yes, that was actually on my agenda, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Corey Ledbetter as my member of the LPA.
I have a motion, and Dr. Ramswell's got a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Abert?
Yes.
Mr. Overdeer?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell?
Yes.
And Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Okay, Kevin, is that it?
Mr.?
All right, I have nothing. I want to go home. Land use attorney?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Yes?
Nada.
All right, last item on the agenda here is public comment. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment in the room tonight?
Matthew?
No, no, sir.
Ray? Meeting adjourned.